Good evening and welcome to this special meeting of June 29, 2020. I will call us to order and I will ask everyone to mute their microphones and please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you call roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Pappan?
Here.
Councilmember Bonilla?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Gothel's?
Here. We are all here and accounted for at this time. I'm looking at the
Consent calendar?
Consent calendar. Madam Clerk, would you read the titles of the consent calendar, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number two, San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department Finance and Human Resources Services Agreement. Item number three, the City Hall Restrooms Remodel a Contract.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Is there any item on the consent agenda that anyone would like to pull? Seeing none, is there any member of the public who would like to pull an item off the consent agenda? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second. A motion in a second. Madam Clerk, would you call roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Gothel's?
Yes.
Thank you.
Having approved the consent calendar, we now move on to old business. We're on item number four. I'll remind all the folks at home that the way to participate in this meeting, we will take public comment after each item. The way to participate is published with the agenda. So you can either call in at 408-638-0968 and type in the conference ID number 881-389-35391. Moving on to item number four, temporary street closures on B Street. Do we have Kathy Kleinbaum? Hi Kathy, I think we see your screen. It says outdoor dining.
It's good evening. So I'm here before you tonight to bring forward a resolution that would approve temporary street closures for the purpose of outdoor dining. So just as a background, at our last council meeting, the city council did direct staff to do a temporary street closure on B Street between Second and Third, and as well as a lane closure on B Street between First and Baldwin. So these closures were installed under the city manager's emergency authority on June 19th, and they've been up and running now for about a week and a half. However, there is a requirement that a formal resolution has to be taken by the city council to authorize this temporary closure. So we're here tonight presenting that formal resolution. The closure would occur through October 19, 2020. We selected that date primarily because that's when the seasons start to change and outdoor dining may be a little bit less enticing. However, it can be extended as needed depending on weather conditions and council interest. In addition, at the last council meeting, we did discuss the possibility of also closing the street between First and Second on B. At the time, there was only really one business on that street that was interested and the rest were in opposition. Since the adjacent block being fully closed, there have been a handful of additional businesses that are interested in having a street closure there. Although I will say that there's still a handful that are in opposition. However, staff is recommending moving forward with this closure just because based on our observations, having a street closure, an open street, and then a partial street closure has created a somewhat confusing traffic pattern. I wouldn't say that I've witnessed any accidents, but I definitely think there's some confusion for drivers navigating the downtown. And having the three consecutive streets closed would be a safer environment for pedestrians and for cars in the downtown. So if the council is supportive of this closure, we can put this into effect prior to the holiday weekend later this week. And I did want to share some pictures of the street closures in action and the parklets in action. So here are some shots that were taken on B Street between Second and Third avenues. I took these on a Thursday night. I'm sure it was even more popular over the weekend. Here are some scenes from, this is actually the worst hall setting, which is both on Baldwin Street and a parklet, as well as on the lane closure between, on B Street between First and Second. And I will say that that lane closure is being used by more than just worst hall, the Japanese restaurant and O'Neills, which are just next door, are also taking full advantage. Unfortunately, the pictures I took of those were like dark and shady, so they weren't good enough to share. And then in addition, the parklets that we have put in place throughout the remainder of the downtown are being well-used. And some restaurants have been spitting them up with plants and shade coverings and things like that. So I just did want to share these images for you to say that the public has definitely been appreciating the parklets and the closures that we've put in place, and we have received several compliments from members of the public. And so with that, the action that's before you tonight is to approve the resolution authorizing the temporary street closure on B Street between Baldwin and Third. So this includes that additional block between First and Second. Thank you.
Are there any questions before we get to what I'm sure are hundreds of people waiting to comment saying thank you to the city council for doing this? Okay, I'll take public comment then. I'm looking at the participants. I see one hand raised. Lisa Diaz Nash?
Good evening, everyone. I will be the member of the general public who says thank you very much to city council for doing this. I think it's been a great success. I would only ask that there be continued interaction with the non-restaurants. I was in the UPS store today on Second Avenue, and they're having a very difficult time because there's a parklet in front of them and there is no parking. So when people want to bring in boxes that are heavy, they can't really get to the UPS store easily. They have to go around the corner, park, and the UPS staff has to come out and walk around the corner to help them bring their boxes in. So I know this is all a learning experience and will get better, but I would just ask that we consider the non-restaurants as well as the restaurants. Thank you.
Thank you for that public comment. I'm sure we'll have further comment on that particular issue and that particular store in just a moment. Any other attendees who would like to make a public comment at this time? I don't see any other hands. I'll give it one more shot. No other hands. Thank you for that. I will close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. It's a good point about the UPS store. I think they reached out to a couple of council members. Councilmember Lee mentioned that as well. So with that in mind, is there any final comment before we entertain a motion? Eric, you got?
Got me? Okay, thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to say that my family and I have dined out twice now in the downtown and we had a great time. We felt safe. We had fun. I'm thrilled that we will open it continuously now. I took a couple of pictures of kids running in the streets while their, while their parents were eating and the parents didn't even turn around. It was just, it was just a great atmosphere. For those of you watching this meeting who haven't had a chance to go there to dine outside yet, I highly encourage you to do so. And if you haven't or plan to, I really would encourage you to think about how this adds to our downtown and, and think about how we might be able to think of something more, a more permanent closure when the crisis subsides. Thanks.
Excellent. Great public, or great comments and all from Deputy Mayor Rodriguez. I'm gonna send it over to Rick.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to
Rick, sorry, just one second. Can I ask members of the public to mute their microphones? Go ahead, Rick.
Sure. The comment regarding the UPS store there kind of hit home for me because I know that corner well. I use that UPS store for a post office box. And what I know is that on the corner, there's an optometrist, a glass store. Then there's a dry cleaner, then there is the UPS store. So there's really no restaurant on that end of the block. There is one close to the UPS store, but I don't know why that entire block needs to be blocked off because the UPS store does involve things being carried in and out. And I think we should try to provide some of that at the end of that block. So those are my comments. Otherwise, I support closing B Street between Baldwin and First the way it is. But between First and Third, including between First and Second, yes, close it.
Great. Other comments from the council? Or a motion?
I just wanted to jump in and ask what the process would be to consider extending or making at least part of the closures permanent, for example, between Second and Third?
I think we would need to evaluate that at the end of this pilot. And I think the city council would need to formally abandon the street in order to do a permanent closure as opposed to a temporary closure. There probably would be the need for some sequel review and it's a little bit more, little more to it than that. I mean, not that it's impossible to do, but it just, it takes more steps.
We just vote on it and it happens. That's what happens. I mean, we vote, we do some study, it happens. Eric wants to make that motion right now. Go ahead, Eric.
I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Lee's question. Is there a difference? Let's say we wanted to have kind of like a summer closure, like a summer nights closure as opposed to making it permanent. Is that, I would assume that that might be easier or is it still the same complete process?
So I, I don't know if Sean Mason wants to respond, but I think a summer night's closure would be similar to this temporary street closure that we're doing. So it'd be a similar process to pass a resolution. Whereas a more permanent closure would require actual abandonment of the right of way.
We don't need a COVID crisis?
We don't need a pandemic, yes.
Alright, thank you.
Diane would like to finish before 9:00 PM. Go ahead, Diane.
Well, I'd just like to move that we adopt the resolution that's required to keep the streets closed.
I'll second. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Mayor Gothel's?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Bonilla?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Excellent. That passes 5-0 and we're moving on to item number five. Thank you, everyone. Item number five is our city attorney's home many, many years ago in a galaxy far, far away. Drew, are you taking up this item?
Yes, are you?
I can hear you and we can see the purchase. I see four slides. Did you really need four whole slides?
I did. Hang on, let me get it to slideshow. Okay, so this item is the purchase of the city attorney's home. Just by way of background, the city attorney and the city co-own a property that Sean's been living in with his family since 2004. The city owns just over 53% and Sean and his family own just under 47%. On May 4th, Sean informed the council of his intent to sell the property. The council had the option to purchase it. It declined that option. And at that point, $1.8 million was established as the value of the property. The equity sharing agreement between Sean and the city allows Sean to sell the property at 95% of the established value if no offer is made within 30 days of listing. So as you might suspect, the COVID-19 pandemic has had an effect on the marketing of the property. The home has only been shown twice in two months that it's been on the market. They did, however, receive an offer in mid-June. The initial offer was rejected and the, the potential buyer presented a counter offer. The counter offer was 1.65 million, which is 92% of the established $1.8 million value. Sean would like to accept that offer of 1.65 million and he's willing to compensate the city for the difference of selling below the threshold. So for council, council's consideration tonight is consider accepting the offer to purchase Sean's home at 92% of the established value of 1.8 million, with the city receiving a share of 53.22% of the net proceeds plus approximately 30,000 of Sean's proceeds. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Quick questions. One, the House isn't being sold to someone that he knows. It's not a niece or nephew, something like that. Just, I think the public would want to know that there's no self-dealing going on.
Correct. There's no self-dealing going on.
And second, this is, this means that Sean's going to make the city whole. We invested in his property and we deserve the return on the investment. It was a good investment, wasn't it?
Yes, I believe the, Sean could probably chime in on the initial purchase price of the home, but I believe it's close to doubled in value.
I mean, we should buy all the city employees' homes, shouldn't we?
Not sure at this point in the market.
At least all the council members.
I just wanted to see Drew's face. It was a good return on investment. I'm glad we did it. It is hard to live here and if, if we could do it for more people, we absolutely would. Are there any other questions from the council before we go to public comment? None going to public comment. Looking at participants, I see 15 hands. Just kidding, Sean. There are no hands. Last call. Seeing no public comment inside of them, I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for a motion.
Motion to sell it.
I'll second that and I thank the city attorney for contributing back the 30,000. A bird in the hand is certainly a good thing right about now. So I really appreciate that contribution.
And I would ask the clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Gothel's?
Yes. Thank you very much for that item. Moving on to the next item, item number six, the 2015 Climate Action Plan, the annual progress report. This is coming to us. We had it on the consent agenda last meeting, I believe, but we brought it back because it was so popular and it's so important. And so Kathy Kleinbaum is here. No, I take that back. Andrea Chow?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Can you hear me?
Just kidding. I was just kidding. Welcome. The floor is yours.
Alright, can everyone see my presentation?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Alright, good evening. My name is Andrea Chow and I'm the sustainability analyst for the city of San Mateo. Tonight, I will make a presentation on the implementation progress of the city's adopted climate action plan. In April 2015, the city council adopted our very first climate action plan, which served as the city's comprehensive strategy to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in our community. And since 2015, since that adoption, staff have returned annually to provide a progress report to show how we've been implementing the climate action plan measures. Now, you might remember a couple of months ago, I had, I attended a city council meeting to present an updated climate action plan. And so over the past year, staff have engaged the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission and council in the development of an updated 2020 climate action plan that established new greenhouse gas emission targets and new measures to meet those new targets for 2030 and 2050. So that was our very large update process. And this report this evening differs from that because we're, tonight I will be presenting the progress made on our adopted plan. So my updates will really be in these 2015 climate action plan measure categories. These are the different categories adopted in our climate action plan. And I have a, just a very brief presentation this evening to highlight the different measures we've, we've touched on over this past calendar year. Attached to the staff report are two attachments that go in depth on every single measure and how we've made progress in each of those areas. So here are some highlights. In 2018, the city entered a contract with PG&E for the Sustainable Solutions Turnkey Program to do energy efficiency upgrades at most city facilities. So this included City Hall, our libraries, fire stations, and recreation facilities. And the upgrades included lighting and mechanical system in building systems upgrades. So I'm really excited because we've done a lot of work over this past calendar year on this project. And we're actually set to have completed the project by the end of the year. And this was a very large $3.2 million project. So we're really excited that these energy efficiency upgrades are almost complete and that we'll start seeing those savings on our PG&E bill. Another item that has been before the council that was very exciting is our energy and green building reach codes or local amendments to our energy and green building code to make sure that we're building very sustainable buildings in San Mateo. The city evaluated and, and developed reach codes that do three things mainly. First, encouraging building electrification, also requiring solar installation, and then finally enhancing the electric vehicle infrastructure readiness requirements. So reach codes were adopted last fall and then went into effect concurrent with the new building code cycle, which was January 1, 2020. So just January of this year. And reach codes will actually be returning back to city council soon because at the May Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission, staff presented reach code options to encourage building electrification in new multifamily construction. And so staff looks forward to presenting those new options at an upcoming study session. So shared mobility, with the abrupt exit of Lime from our region's bike share scene, the city took a moment to develop a shared mobility permit program. And this replaced the need for the city to create individual agreements with shared mobility operators. It establishes clear expectations for the next shared mobility operator that might operate in the city. Unfortunately, this is despite some very direct engagement with shared mobility operators around the region. The city did not receive an application from an operator to operate. So in the meantime, we're continuing to track shared mobility operations across the region to strategize on next steps. At this point, operators are seemingly focused on large urban markets. So we're seeing them very active in San Francisco, San Jose, and Oakland. But we obviously will continue to track these. And I think there is an opportunity, we hope, to really partner with neighboring jurisdictions and caltering to create a more robust network. As part of the South Bayside Waste Management Authority, the SBWMA, the city is excited to support the Organics to Energy Pilot Program. So the Organics to Energy Pilot will extract organic material that would otherwise be destined for landfills and turn this material into a slurry that would be converted into clean gas as a renewable energy source. This is a very new and exciting pilot. I know it is facing a little bit of a delay because of COVID-19, but we're very excited about the opportunity with this pilot and especially because it could lengthen the lifespan of our landfill. So that's also an important piece of the project or important benefit of the project. As part of the 2020 Climate Action Plan update, the city also completed a 2017 greenhouse gas emission inventory. And this piece is really important because it gave us a clear indication of where the city sits in reference to our goals. So this inventory showed that the city had reduced greenhouse gas emissions at 18% below 2005 levels. So that means we've met and exceeded our goal to be 15% below 2005 levels by 2020. So we're very much on track and we're really excited about that. However, we know it will be increasingly more challenging to continue deep greenhouse gas emission reductions in our community. We know we've done everything that we could that was, you know, the low-hanging fruit. So we need, will continue to need to be creative in order to meet our new and ambitious climate goals. And then really looking forward, Councilmember Lee asked me to be prepared to talk about, you know, what we're thinking about for this upcoming fiscal year and how COVID-19 has impacted this. I think the first one is probably where I've had to pivot the most. In April, I was very excited and had a few in-person events planned for the community. And so those were unfortunately canceled. And so it's clear that people are interested in participating in online learning opportunities. And so I'm looking forward to partnering with the library and with the speakers I had to cancel on to hopefully bring those programs to our residents virtually. I'm also looking into expanding electric vehicle infrastructure in public garages. The city has already funded electric vehicle charging stations at City Hall, our main library, and the central garages. But we think there's an opportunity to expand that. Building electrification has gained a lot of attention because there's very clean energy being provided to our community by Peninsula Clean Energy. And while our reach codes for new construction really address new buildings coming into San Mateo, there's a huge opportunity of existing buildings that could benefit from new electric appliances. So it'll be another priority to reach out to our community to provide information about resources and rebates and just general education about electric opportunities. A commercial benchmarking ordinance would be new to the city. So benchmarking ordinances require building owners to track and report their building energy usage. And the state of California has this requirement for large buildings already. But what I've seen other jurisdictions do is expand the number of buildings that are impacted by this ordinance. And so this is something that staff will explore and And so this is something that staff will explore and consider bringing to council in the future. Expanding composting opportunities has come up time and time again. We have so many community members who are interested in composting, especially those who live in multifamily units and might not already have access to that. And so Roxanne did a great presentation to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission very recently, highlighting some of the challenges with bringing composting to those buildings, but also the opportunity to work with individuals and bring composting to different and new buildings. The Disposable Food Service Wear Ordinance was something that was initiated by the County of San Mateo and was, I think, something that most of the council members are familiar with. But essentially, San Mateo County drafted and adopted an ordinance that requires the use of compostable foodware at food facilities. And so they were able to adopt their ordinance for unincorporated county. And so council has prioritized exploring this ordinance for the city of San Mateo. Okay. And then finally, I very much look forward to bringing our building electrification reach codes to address the new multifamily buildings and that will be something upcoming on, at a city council study session. And that concludes my presentation.
Andrea, that was fantastic. When, whenever we refer to the climate action plan, we should call it the award-winning climate action plan. Whenever we refer to the reach codes, we should call them the award-winning reach codes. With that, are there any questions before we go to public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I have some questions.
Yes, Councilmember Benia.
Thanks. So just in looking over the documents that were provided, I have a couple of questions. First, I want to remind everybody, I think when you last described the climate action plan, you spoke about what we're going to be looking at for the multifamily buildings. Can you describe that once again, please?
Are you talking about specifically the reach codes?
Yes.
For, right. So last fall, we adopted reach codes that encouraged building electrification. But we did not address new multifamily construction. And so what will be coming to council at a future date is a discussion of building electrification reach codes for that building segment, new multifamily.
And is there a recommendation for that?
Yeah, the proposed ordinance was outlined to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission, but it aligns with what the city adopted previously.
For, we didn't adopt for multifamily?
I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
It aligns with the building electrification reach codes that were adopted for single-family duplex and buildings with office use.
Okay. So it's the incentive program?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I want to ask, because I was looking at the the document that had the whole list of the, you know, the primary things that you wanted to report on. And if I look at, on page two, it talks about public EV charging stations, which is one of the things that we have done. We've done well, I think. It says that there are 120 public chargers that are out there at 24 locations, which are, I guess, above and beyond the 18 Level 2s and the two fast chargers that we have. Is there a list, any place of where all those things are?
There's a map on PlugShare.com.
Okay. I'll write that down and go look at it later. Thank you. And then I'm looking on page two of the same document. Renewable energy systems for existing non-residential buildings incentive, right? So in 2019, it says there are 251 solar installation permits issued for residential and commercial projects. But then it says, no data is available on solar water heaters. Do we not track those separately or did we not permit any?
On solar water heaters?
Yeah, yeah. It's a water heated on a device on the roof.
That's right. I'm actually, I'm not sure if I didn't report the report fully on the solar water heaters data. So I'll have to follow up on that.
Okay. So it's a thermal water heating device, I think. Okay. So it also says that of the, the 251 solar installations, that the kilowatt potential data is not available. When we give permits for solar installations, don't we collect kilowatt data along with that, expected production of kilowatt?
We do. So we do have the kilowatts that were installed, but the metric that was in the previous which is in the climate action plan is asking for the potential of all solar, like solar opportunities in the city. So that's, that's a different metric. But I would be happy to provide the kilowatt of solar that was installed.
I think that would, yeah, it makes sense. And I think that would help to track progress. It's something people can look at and think about. You know, it's what we've done. So thank you. So on the same document now, on page one, I'm looking at.
Rick, can I jump in? So the number you want is the locally generated solar energy?
So when somebody applies to put solar on their roof, right? They apply to put on a such and such a number of kilowatt hour system, right? And so we should be able to report that we've installed this many systems, a total of this many kilowatts we expect provided from those systems.
On an annual basis, this is how much energy was generated from solar locally?
Annual or cumulative.
Do you want to include the hospital in that number?
You know what? They're, they're in San Mateo and they have stuff on their roof and.
So yes.
Yes.
Sounds good. Okay. Just clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Thank you. So I'm also looking here at residential energy efficiency in render occupied retrofits. And so it looks like actually nine multifamily projects with 664 units took this up and made energy efficiency retrofits. But it says no data is available on the number of homes retrofitted. So I guess we were looking for homes too with energy efficient appliances. I guess maybe that is, is that just a harder thing to nail down to get people to actually try to, they don't get a permit, obviously, to change appliances, right?
Yes, exactly. For appliances specifically.
Okay, good. Next, energy efficiency at healthcare centers. Okay, that's covered. Joe just talked about it. And finally, renewable energy systems for existing residences. We're looking to incentivize, actually, you spoke about that already. Transportation demand management. So I know we have our rail corridor TDM program and we're looking at doing downtown at some point is what I've heard. But I think we're going to be going through some changes. Right now, traffic patterns have changed. A lot of reasons that people would call for a TDM have kind of vanished. But still, TDM is a way of managing what transportation we do have. Buses, shuttles, bikes, everything, pedestrian movements. And so this all goes back, I think, to the Complete Streets Plan. Are we going to be able to get some kind of, because it says here cumulative data not available? Let's say like next year, do you think we'll be able to get an update on that, that kind of information?
For?
TDM. TDM, the far right column, whatever it says. I'm looking at a photograph, so. It's the outcomes, the updates.
Okay. I will look into how we can better measure and report on this.
Okay. I think it would be good to have some sort of a tracking system so we know what progress we are making. Because right now, we can't really say. Okay, those are my questions on that. Overall, I want to say thank you because our Sustainability Commission that we established back in, I think, 2015 has now been merged with the Public Works Commission. They're doing a great job, I think. These are people who volunteer and spend many hours reading voluminous materials and studying some kind of esoteric information. And so I thank them. I thank you. And I look forward to us having ever improving outcomes on this. So thank you.
Rick, I share your passion. It is one of the things I'm most proud of working on as part of the city. And now is the time to double down. Now is the time to keep pushing hard. I know this is the crisis that we face. Even when COVID goes away, we're still going to be dealing with the environment. So.
I just want to add one thing. Even though I said what I said, I still feel that our system of incentivizing electrification rather than having a requirement on new construction is not the proper way to go. I really feel like knowing the damage that greenhouse gases are causing, looking at the potential, it's just billions and billions of dollars, millions of lives lost as our climate continues to degrade, we have to do as much as we can to eliminate all greenhouse gas emissions. Thank you.
Absolutely. Double down and be bold. And we're doing it through developer agreements. There's ways of mandating it and making sure that we get it on the backend.
Yeah, I spoke to all those guys up front. And so that's why they did it.
Diane's got her hand up. Go ahead, Diane.
I just, just to follow up on Councilmember Benia's comments. And if it's not possible to do it all at once, one of the things that we had talked about, Andrea, with you is, is the idea of phasing in if we need to, but getting there as it relates to the multifamily. Because I agree with Councilmember Benia and Mayor Gothols. And I appreciate their passion. We've got to get to beyond perhaps the just incentivizing, especially since in the fall of 2019, we've learned that it is actually more economical anyway. They've come a long way, I guess, with, what is it called? Inductive? No, what's it called?
Induction cooking, yeah.
Induction, thank you. So in any event, but if there's any holdup or it doesn't quite, you know, the numbers don't quite tally up, let's look at perhaps a phased in. If we don't have to phase in, that's even better. But I just don't want to halt it because it might not pencil right away. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thanks for your comments.
Yeah. The easy thing is to show proof of concept by getting somebody to go first and show everybody else that it actually does pencil out and that it works. We have a couple of public comments, but I want to get the questions from the council first. Anybody else have questions? Seeing none, I'll go to the comments. Ms. Nash?
Here we go. Good evening again. I want to commend city staff, Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission and council for the great work that San Mateo is doing. I would also suggest that since there are so many programs in San Mateo that are first of their kind, that you work very closely with Sustainable San Mateo County, the organization that you know very well. And they've got a sustainability ideas bank where people, cities are able to put in programs that are already implemented so that other cities can take them up and implement them quickly and update them as code is updated. So I think this is a great way to share the work that's already been done and leverage it across the peninsula. Thank you.
Adam Lorraine. Go ahead, Adam.
Hello, council. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Good evening, council and staff. I just wanted to, first of all, thank the council and, and all for the, what sounds like progressive thinking on how we can fight climate change in a proactive, cutting-edge manner. It's wonderful to hear. I'm very proud of my city council to be seeing these things. And I just wanted to give you a bit of a heads up related to this upcoming item that Andrea mentioned, coming before you in July. While I too love the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission and believe that they do a good job and that work hard and everything, there, it's come to my attention that the item that came before the commission was not necessarily optimal. And since then, I had a number of conversations with people from Sustainable San Mateo County, from Menlo Spark, and I believe you received some letters to this effect that inform us that other cities in our county have had the opportunity to pursue stronger reach codes than what was initially proposed to the commission. So when it comes before you in July, I'm just hoping that staff can have some sort of update to that effect, hopefully bringing forward to you options that weren't necessarily brought to the commission. And if not, being very clear about why San Mateo may not be able to adopt the same kind of electric reach code that the cities of Brisbane, Pacifica, and actually the San Mateo County itself were able to adopt sort of since we started along this reach code path last year. So I just wanted to note that and I look very much forward to the July discussion. Thank you.
Robert White here.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to echo what Adam Lorraine just said about strong reach codes. I think it's essential that we adopt them as soon as possible. I want to thank the council and Andrea for bringing up the benchmarking goal. That's a really good idea to benchmark commercial building on a rotating cycle every few years to see how they're doing. Some other cities nearby have already adopted that. I think it'd be just fantastic if San Mateo were to do the same. I'd also like to see San Mateo continue a very strong composting program in lieu of doing O2E. As you all know, O2E puts the organic material into a digester and does generate methane gas, which is then used to power vehicles. I think a better solution might be to interrupt the composting material at the source. And then finally, I want to put in a plug for heat pump water heaters. You've talked about solar thermal water heaters, but heat pump water heaters are soon going to be available to get rebates from PCE. And I want to encourage all city of San Mateo residents to put in heat pump water heaters. So thank you for your time and I look forward to a strong reach code.
Drew, thank you for those comments, Bob.
Good evening. As someone told me a while back, I probably should go by Citizens Drew sometimes here. Just given especially the video context so people are clear which Drew is talking. So I just have one or two comments. First is the talk about solar installed versus production. And the interest of being clear, I think it's one thing to say installed kilowatt through the permit. That's a very different number than actually what's produced on the roofs and, and/or what's produced annually on the roofs due to a variety of situations. So I think clarity about what number's been reported and/or tracked each year, not getting those too confused because I know for my own efforts on solar, there's this installed number which may not be what's going to be produced once I get it installed. So that's one thing. The other is this incentives versus required. My direction is drifting and headed towards greenhouse free. But I come down a little bit more on the incentive side and showing different pieces how it works and how I say, my example is the things I've had to overcome is slowly to move the house residents over, like the heat pump water heater. As I've studied it, it does make sense. But you go to Home Depot and Lowe's, there's only one product. Who can install it? It's like mandating something like that versus helping the market develop it. And then maybe down the road, when the market's bigger, then, then it might make sense to do it. So in a sense, doing these pieces that are part of electrification and helping those individual pieces along versus just a whole bunch, everything's required. I think incentivizing the pieces that, and then in time, they come together and that is a better approach. It, you know, I get the passion to do electrification right away, but my neighbors down the street around me will just roll their eyes and go, what the heck? And that doesn't win people over, doesn't win some people over. And that's kind of my hesitation on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. I'll bring it back to the council. I don't see any further public comment. So is there a motion?
There's no motion required.
Thank you so much.
Sorry. I have some comments, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, I was muted there. I'd like to address a couple of the things that we heard. Regarding Mr. Whitehair's comments regarding O2E, which is Organics to Energy, that is a pilot program that has been running, being run right now at South Bay Waste Management Authority. It's true that we do create methane, but the methane that is created then is used as fuel and the resulting CO2 is much less harmful to the atmosphere than the methane that would be emanating from the landfill if the organic food waste were just dumped where it has been dumped into the landfill. So we're greatly cutting methane emissions. Methane emissions are like 80 times worse for the environment, for the, the atmosphere than CO2 is. So it's not a perfect resolution, but it's a step in the right direction. And I agree, we do need to look to limiting it, that kind of waste altogether. Regarding the heat pump water heater programs and so forth, PCE also has a pilot program for that right now. It's part of our building electrification program. It's part of our building electrification program. We're going to be doing some on a trial basis. We're investing $6 million to do this over the next couple of years. And it's true, you can't widely and easily find the heat pumps yet and/or somebody to install it. Installers are going to be trained as part of PCE's program through the Bay Ren Training Program. And so those things are going to be coming and more readily available. They are a real big improvement over burning natural gas. They do cost a little more. PCE is also running an incentive program. I think a person could qualify for up to $2,500 in incentives for that work. So if anybody wants to know more, they can ask me. Thank you.
Excellent. Well said. Thank you, Rick. Be bold, double down. Councilmember Lee.
I just wanted to compliment you, Andrea, for, for your agility during COVID. I, I have been in touch with you very, you know, very frequently about all the ways that you've had to pivot. And, and I think that the fact that your position is, you know, is, is housed in the city manager's office is a real, it's, it's a structure that really works to our city's advantage. And I, and I see how hard you are working to, to find synergy and opportunity with so many different departments. And, and that's really exciting. I wanted to just kind of put a little seed out there for us to think about with the ways that, you know, during COVID, all the ways that we've really amplified and bolstered our business outreach through, through the task force and that there, there might be some, some ways to leverage those connections to, to do some of the outreach and education targeting businesses to bring them forward in, in the education about, you know, rebate programs or, or some of the foreseeable policy changes and getting their input and buy-in as well. And so I just would, I would, I would say that, you know, those are, those are fresh and warm contexts that I would love us to, to nurture more.
Well deserved kudos for Andrea. And Andrea, before we let you go, would you put in a plug for an event coming up in two weeks?
That's right. Thank you for the reminder. We're excited to be part of Sustainable San Mateo County's awards, virtual awards reception that is occurring July 10th. I, I'm sorry, I'm slow to read this off the calendar.
That's okay.
Do you know what's off your head or any of the council members who are attending?
It is, I know, we all have to look it up here.
Robert can tell us.
I have it at 5:30.
5:30, okay.
Five or 5:30.
July 10th, 5:30.
There we go.
Yeah, July 10th. So the city is excited to be receiving the Sustainable San Mateo County Reach Code Trail Blazer Award. That's it.
Yes, in recognition of our award-winning reach codes, which are part of our award-winning Climate Action Plan. Thank you so much, Andrea.
Thank you.
Okay, that'll do it for item number six. Moving on to item number seven, we have our emergency ordinance extending moratorium on small business evictions related to COVID-19. Sean Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll now share my screen here. Well, for some reason I can see it, but I can't see it to share my screen. So it's a short presentation, so I'll just go through it. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is to give the council an opportunity to consider whether to adopt an emergency ordinance extending the expiration date of the previously adopted small business eviction moratorium. In the presentation, I'll review the history of the eviction moratorium and some factors for the council to consider. So as we're all familiar, on March 16th, oh, looks like Patrice is now bringing up the presentation. Could you go to Patrice to slide three? So can the council see that now?
Yes.
Great. So on March 16th, the Bay Area Health Officials issued a shelter in place order and at the same time, the city council declared a local emergency, as well as the governor issuing orders suspending state laws that might preempt local eviction moratorium until May 31st of 2020. On May 29th, the governor extended the suspension of those state laws until July 28th of 2020. Next slide, please. On March 23rd, the city council adopted a small business eviction moratorium and on March 30th amended that moratorium to establish an expiration date of May 31st. On May 18th, the council adopted an ordinance extending the moratorium to June 30th of 2020. So for, for tonight, the decisions the council is being asked to make is, should the term of the moratorium be extended? And if so, for, for how long? In the packet, if the council does choose to extend the moratorium, the packet contains an ordinance that would extend it to July 31st. If the council does want to extend the moratorium, I would suggest that that be revised to July 28th to coincide with the date of the order issued by the governor. In terms of factors to consider, the county shelter in place or order has relaxed rules and allows less restricted opening of businesses. So that might impact the council's decision-making. Also, for your consideration, the county board supervisors, which had enacted a small business eviction moratorium for unincorporated county territory, allowed their moratorium on business evictions to, to expire. That completes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Was there reasoning behind why the county let, let it expire? Is there?
You know, we spoke about it at the, on a weekly basis, the city attorneys and county council have a joint call and discuss issues. That's where I learned that they had expired, but that there really was no explanation as to why. Probably had to do with the relaxation of the shelter in place orders.
Is there strong downside to us extending it to July 28th?
I can't think of a strong downside for, for doing that.
That's all I needed. Anyone else have a question before I go to public comment?
I have a question if, is Jennifer turn on? No?
Nope.
Okay.
Maybe later. Anyone else? Okay, public comment. Any questions from the public? I see Bruce Baser. Go ahead, Bruce. Bruce, we can't hear you yet. Go ahead. Bruce, I'll come back to you in a minute. Work on your microphone situation. Anyone else have a public comment among our attendees? James Drogo. Go ahead, James.
Hey, I wrote you guys a letter earlier today. I don't know if you got it to the council members there. So you know what my point is, but I'm really trying to figure out what is being done besides the eviction moratorium. I mean, by the time I, if we go all the way to July, I'll have like a $50,000 debt to my landlord and my landlord has not given me any leeway whatsoever on the, you know, I have six, seven locations in the Bay Area and every landlord has met me halfway to some degree, like, oh, you can pay partial rent up to this date. We'll look at your financials, we'll do this, we'll do that. So they're working with me, every one of them, except for the one in San Mateo. And he's just, you can move out if you want to. You know, that's his answer to helping me out. And for me to pay, I, I used an example of three months worth of rent would put me at an extra $2,500 a month. I'm a picture frame shop. It's almost like running a restaurant. There's small margins. We have a lot of staff. There's a lot of payroll. There's a lot of overhead. So by the time I get to, we get to five more months, then that amount's going to be twice my rent. It's going to be a 50% increase in my rent. So I just don't know how this is helping people in the long term. And I'm wondering if there's anything anybody's thinking about to help local businesses that have been there. I've been there since 1995. The business has been there and I took it over after working for Peter, the owner, for 10 years and I've owned it for five. And we thought we'd be going on forever, but now it's looking like it might be something we have to give up if this is the answer to, you know, staying in business. And my business is only, you know, we've got, I didn't bring this up in my letter, but all of the parking is being taken up and streets are being closed. So try carrying a 24 by 36 picture frame to your car down three blocks. I have to hire more people to help take people, people to their cars and do deliveries and that sort of thing. So it's, it's been onerous to just keep the doors open at this point. And it's nice to have the short-term eviction moratorium, but it's, it's not helping me make money and it's not helping me stay in business after July. So that's all I got to say. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, James. Go buy your picture frames, people.
I just was there. James Giacino. I was a recent purchaser.
Bruce, go ahead.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to first of all, thank the city council for taking early, early and decisive action to help protect the small businesses in downtown. I'm a property owner in downtown, but I'm a small business owner. I operate a small commercial property business. So the, the current, the, the current moratorium on evictions is actually something that I moved to with my tenants before the city council did. As soon as things began to slow down, I began to work with my tenants on how to help them stay in business. But now we're in a position where we're beginning a phased reopening of businesses and landlords aren't being offered similar protections or considerations under this current, current ordinance that small business owners are, that the retail shops are and the restaurants are. Small business owners or small property owners, property owners in general, still have all of the ongoing operating expenses of running the building, taxes that have to be paid, lenders, if, if you've got loans on the property that have to be serviced. So we're not getting any relief on, on that side. So as we begin to move into this phased reopening, I'd like the city council to consider some sort of a phased restoration of rents for land, land, property owners. Now, we're not looking to evict our tenants, we're looking to work with our tenants, figure out how to make them successful in their business as well as us successful in our business in the long run.
Thank you very much, Bruce. Oh, I'm sorry, Bruce. If I cut you off, go ahead and finish your thought.
No, that was it. That was all. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much for participating. I'm looking to see if there are any other hands up. I don't see any other hands up. I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. I have two quick questions to start us off. Number one, haven't we already adopted a phased in paying back of the rents that are not being paid at this time?
Yes, so under the, the current version of the ordinance and if extended, this carries forward, there is a payback period of 12 months. The first six months, there's no obligation, certainly a tenant could, if they could afford to, start to pay back some of the rent that wasn't paid during the moratorium. So they wouldn't have to pay for the first six months and then start paying in the second half of the year. And, and that's sort of prorated for whatever is owed over those final six months.
Okay, great. And the other thing was about the idea that we're not doing anything for landlords. I appreciate that really this needs to be fought at all levels. We should be dealing with banks cutting a break to the landlords, landlords cutting a break to the tenants. And then we're, we've provided over $400,000 in assistance to these businesses in the hopes that some of that money would trickle up to, to the landlords. And so we, we thought we were helping everybody by, by doing that. Are there any other comments that other council members have at this time? I'm in favor of extending it to the end of July. I don't see a downside to doing it.
That's a motion. I got a second.
Okay, great. Motion to second. Madam Clark, could we do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Gothos?
Yes.
Councilmember Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Excellent. That passes 5-0. Go buy your picture frames. James is open for business, everybody.
That's why I buy all my picture frames. Thank you.
Excellent. Moving on to item number eight, our COVID-19 update with Drew. Welcome, Drew. I see you're on the spot with your PowerPoint presentation. Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you. So first I wanted to start off with just an update on where things are with the health orders. So the county issued new orders a few weeks ago on June 17th and actually lifted the local shelter in place and put us under the state's shelter in place order. And what that allowed is for additional businesses and activities based on the state's resiliency roadmap. And so businesses like dine-in restaurants, salons, and gyms were amongst the businesses that have been allowed to reopen. While we are under the state's shelter in place, the, there was additional direction provided from the county health officer. So we do have, still have a local health order, limits gatherings to 50 people, social distancing protocols are still in effect, we have to wear face masks in public. And for businesses that are open, they have health and safety requirements that they have to fulfill in order to remain open. So operationally, for parks and recreation, we're continuing to slowly reopen different facilities. Our dog parks and sports courts are now open. We've been limiting our restroom reopenings to allow for additional cleanings during the day and playgrounds and picnic, group picnic and barbecue areas do remain closed. For community development, our rental assistance through Samaritan House, we've actually been able to support 35 households and provide a total of $76,000 in assistance so far. So for our library, we are continuing a slow reintroduction of core library services. We've been doing curbside pickup of materials for, for the month of June. We're now setting up a system to quarantine returned items. So the best practices there are to quarantine returns for 72 hours before recirculating. So we're planning on taking returns starting on July the 6th. We've had sneeze guards installed and we are preparing hand sanitizer stands for, for the facility right now. And we're also working with AARP reps to offer onsite tax assistance starting in late July or early August. And additionally, from a program perspective, we're trying to put together live and socially distanced storytimes in the park. So very slow, very incremental reintroduction of our core library services at this point. Lot, lot of planning going on there, but we have no, no date at this point at which the, the library itself, the facility will be open to the public. Public Works, the Safe Streets Initiative has been going fairly well. However, we have run into some operational issues that have required daily staff work and daily staff attention. What's happening is that barriers and signs are being removed and so they're having, staff is having to go down on a daily basis and move them back. And so in order to address this, we've been working, looking to speak with the community leaders about relocating some of these segments off of collector streets. So we're currently exploring alternatives for Fremont and Monte Diablo with the North Central Neighborhood, with proposals being, including Claremont and Grant. From Bay Meadows, we put some additional signage on Delaware and Saratoga to, to continue to try to limit any through traffic. try to limit any through traffic on 28th Avenue at this point. Um, and certainly as we, as we reopen, um, and, and more businesses are allowed to operate and more traffic's on the street, we, we need to try to balance out the resources it takes to run this program with the benefits of the program. Um, it's been very well received from the people that are, that are using it. There's a lot of you, uh, enthusiasm. And a lot of people have used our safe streets um, as we put them up. And so it's been, it's been nice to see the community response to this. But as noted, um, for the folks who aren't as interested in using it, there's, they've, that's created some issues as well. That's, that's taking staff attention. So we're just trying to balance that out and get this set up to continue to work uh, without requiring uh, as much staff intervention uh, as, as has been required over the past month or so. And then finally, um, looking for council confirmation uh, on actions that I've taken in response to the local pro, uh, local emergency proclamation, which Kathy mentioned in her earlier presentation. We closed segments of B Street uh, on the 19th. So prior to tonight's resolution, so like confirmation of that item. And then um, for items to be, uh, actions to be um, taken in the future, um, what I just wanted to note this evening is, is that my, the plan is at least to continue the virtual council meetings, at least through August. Um, continue to monitor the health orders and what we're able to do. We could potentially look in the fall to, to start virtual um, virtual or hybrid meetings that would be virtual and um, live, uh, if, if council is interested in going that direction. But for now, I was planning on keeping us virtual at least through August and then uh, readdressing this at our, at our August meeting as far as how we move forward. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Uh, Councilmember Lee.
I was wondering, uh, so I have a couple of questions, uh, one of, one of which is, I think that we're seeing some um, some increases in business closures and um, and some, some vacancies, increased vacancies. And I was wondering, what internally are we doing to um, to attract these, these um, these changes?
Um, I, at, at this point, I don't know, I don't know if Jennifer is online. Um, I don't know if she's here with us.
Okay.
Well, so I'll have to circle back with, with council on that. Cause I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. And then um, and then also I was, I, I've heard from some community members that they are um, unaware of their rental assistance program. And so I, I just wanted to put it out there that I think that that's something that we need to double down on communication about, especially if there is um, there still is funding available. And same with um, with the childcare allocations. And so I, I just, I want to make sure that you know, the funding is, is being disseminated quickly and um, to people who need it. And so, I mean, if, if it makes sense to do um, maybe in our next update, what steps are taken to, to communicate that to the community? And if we need to be doing that, um, you know, through partnerships with our nonprofits or core service agencies or um, how, you know, how to, how to make sure that the help that's available is being utilized. Um, and then I think that the last, the last point and question, I, I keep on hearing from folks that the switch to, to our virtual meetings has enabled a lot more participation. Um, and so I think that, you know, we, we probably at some point want to have a conversation about how, how moving forward, we can use all of the technology learnings that we've, that we've, have built out this capacity for ongoing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, certainly.
Um, and then I'll just end saying that one shout out to Parks and Rec. Um, both of my kids are at King Camp and having an amazing time. And the um, the staff has been, has been stellar and um, and I feel really, really confident that all the safety measures are being taken to ensure um, that social distancing and um, and safety and fun are all happening and during camp. So um, I just wanted to make sure that Sheila and her team get uh, the kudos that they deserve.
Excellent.
If I may answer um, Councilmember Lee's first question about tracking business vacancies.
Yes.
So we are taking notes and um, being mindful of the businesses that we see being um, vacated that are not reopening. We don't have a way of knowing other than what we can visually see or what we hear about through various social media or through the grapevine. Um, but we are keeping track of where we do find out.
Are, are there any uh, business license fees or anything that we will no longer receive? Is there a way to track it annually where we see which businesses maybe are not going forward?
Often we, we send out the renewals for business licenses and then we find out at that point in time whether a business is no longer um, in existence.
Just not in real.
Yeah.
Not in real time. Okay. Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a question for Drew. Um, do you know of the timing for the um, the kind of the revamp of the street closures of the, or the slow, slow streets? When's that gonna, when are you planning? When do you think that will happen?
Uh, you know, I'm not sure. Um, I've got Brad on the line and Bethany as well. They may be able to um, to chime in. I don't know how far along we are in the conversations with the neighborhoods.
Okay. My, my, oh, sorry, go ahead. I didn't see you.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Um, yeah, we, we have had some initial discussion as of the end of uh, last week. So um, we're still working with them on those changes. Um, yeah, it's been a challenge for the maintenance team to, to get out there every day. Um, and, and take care of the, the public, what, what they're kind of helping us out with there. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, cause I'm, I'm very concerned about the safety, uh, particularly on, on Fremont, um, north of Fourth and Monte Diablo, basically that whole stretch. Because I feel like um, my son and I try to ride, go on, on um, all of our bikes, our streets, our slow streets every weekend. And I'm noticing that those particular segments are getting progressively worse. And the, and you kind of have this false sense of, of safety, um, when in actuality, they're basically just like regular streets now. So I'm just, I, I'm concerned that we're gonna have an accident there at, at some point. So the faster we can move on that, the better. And we might want to consider, especially that Fremont segment, uh, we might want to consider just perhaps um, closing it down until we have something better because it's, there's, there's full cars on it um, right now. So anyway.
Yeah, that, that was a consideration I had. And so uh, if that's okay with the council, one of the things we wanted to do is um, you know, close the areas we're having difficulties at and still, but still work with the neighborhoods on, on uh, these other options.
Deputy Mayor, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, great. Any other comments from the council members or questions from council members before I go to public comment on this item?
So I, I do have one question. Um, I've been hearing from some members of the public regarding COVID-19 reporting uh, coming from the county. And there seems to be some questions about how often the county reports. Um, uh, the fact that there are questions about what they report. It looks as though when they do report, San Mateo has some high numbers. But we haven't seen any breakdown by zip code. We don't know really what's going on. Questions are being asked about, you know, is it because the hospital is here or because of the testing at the fairgrounds? People don't know. I'm wondering if we can ask our city manager to ask the county, uh, if they can give us some more regular and more in-depth uh, finer grain of reporting on the COVID-19 cases.
I'd be happy to ask that question of the county.
Rick, I think you bring up a good point, which is that it's important to clarify one of Dr. Morrow's comments that was taken out of context. Uh, one of those comments had to do with the reliability of the data. And I think that Dr. Morrow made the point that there are many cases that are unreported. And for that reason, we should take the, the data that we're receiving with a grain of salt. The idea that there are only the number of cases that have tested positive is just not true. We know that. And Dr. Morrow has repeated that over and over again. And so um, all of us know that there are more cases than are being reported out in the general public. And, and we have to understand that going forward. But that doesn't mean that we just don't look at the data at all. It's important for us to get the best data that we can. Um, I, that, that was one thing that I saw in some emails that I felt should be put back into context.
So I'm wondering if we could maybe, you know, you know, along the lines of people feel that they're not really hearing, they don't know. Something we could add to our weekly newsletter or something, a COVID-19 update report with actual latest reporting from the county?
So I have mixed feelings about that, Rick. I have mixed feelings about it because it adds another layer of uh, of filter. When really the best source for those numbers is to, to point directly at the county and how they're reporting them. Any, any filter, any uh, nuance that we try to put on that i- is
Oh.
It, it will run the risk of, of changing.
Yeah, we should not try to interpret what they're saying at all. No, I'm talking about just simply putting it where people can find it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, any other, I, I have one public comment here. I'm gonna go to now. Oh, before we do that, Diane, go ahead.
Yeah, just to follow up with respect to the county, um, we've been running substantially higher than any city in the county for quite some time. So I think, a- a- and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's been about a month now that we've had numbers that are higher than any other city in the county. Um, and so the inquiry does need to be made. And what we get a lot of times, well, we got data, but we told you it wouldn't mean anything. And, but at this point, because we are so much larger numbers-wise, I think it's reasonable to ask the question and to expect now that some additional analysis start to take place. It wasn't like it just came out yesterday that we were exponentially higher. It was quite a while ago. So I, I'm curious myself and I'm concerned for our residents as well. So if we can, I, I, Drew, you may not get the answer, but I appreciate you asking it.
I would like to add that I think this is important because we are hearing news of upticks in certain areas. And so there's a lot of uncertainty out there. Um, we should at least know what we can know. If there's a, some kind of a report by, I don't know. I don't want to go any farther, but I think we could do something better. Let's try.
Dave Clark. Go ahead, Dave.
Mr. Mayor and uh, Mr. City Manager. Um, I, I've seen a lot of the, these comments online and I originally jumped in because people uh, don't really put the numbers in context. And I, and then I said, you're, you know, you've misinterpreted this. And this is mostly next door. And when I pulled the data out, I said, wait a minute, you're right. You know, I mean, probably maybe right for the wrong reasons. But so that if you're looking per, per 10,000 residents, San Mateo has 600, 66 cases uh, average. And you just go down to something like Burlingame and it's 26. What's going on? That's the question. And I guess the second point, it's, and I've sent my spreadsheet to you, is um, it's a fun way to spend the day, you know? But um, the, the problem with this that I have with uh, San Mateo County is they, they don't do any granular um, uh, reports showing per zip code. So people are guessing, okay, we're at 66, you know, Menlo Park's at 39. It must be inmates. It must be the old folks home, you know? And that's what the answer should be, Sean, if you can, uh, I'm sorry, Drew, if, if, if you can uh, relay that is why can't we have data like all, every other county in the, in the Bay Area? That's it. Thank you.
Well said, Dave. Drew, go ahead. Drew?
Yeah, I, I'm bringing this up because I, I probably got confused along the way a little bit on something. But on the earlier one, there was talk of the B Street closing and the streets and stuff downtown. And I thought somewhere in variety of presentations, and it may be over multiple agendas, there was talk of other areas in the city that there'd be parklets and some stuff uh, closing to help the restaurants. And I know uh, I've seen stuff on 37th Avenue where they've taken over parts of sidewalks, but they didn't do parking. I'm thinking of restaurants on 42nd Avenue. There's stuff on 25th Avenue. And there's stuff, other places in the city. Some are in private shopping areas like Laurel, Laurel Wood or Laurel Meadows, which is on the east side of the tracks is like a private little shopping area. It's a place we've gone to eat. Variety of restaurants, but they have a private parking lot. So it's probably not a city street area to block off. But I'm wondering how that, like what's going on with the kind of supporting the restaurants outside of the downtown area? Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Uh, and Adam Lorraine.
Thank you, council and staff. Um, I just wanted to quickly second what I heard from Deputy Mayor Rodriguez uh, with regard to the uh, the experience on uh, the safe streets in, in north central. I'll, I'll just throw in that I, I too, certainly this weekend, and I imagine every, every weekend that we have as we get into summer is, is gonna pick up a little more uh, steam. But uh, I definitely felt on my bike like it was almost back to normal as cars were zip, zip, zipping by. And um, and that's too bad. I, I do just want this to be one datum that goes along into the overall collection. I don't wish to overshadow that, that's being collected from uh, elsewhere. And, and indeed, I, I hope that this discussion that included a little bit about potentially closing streets before we move on to other streets could potentially be shared with the neighborhood associations uh, that are uh, associated and uh, before uh, just going ahead. And, and I hope, I imagine as I've heard, we're working with them and let's keep working with them. They're, they're the ones who are are working to uh, bring more data. Um, but I did just want to throw that out there. And I, I also just mentioned that I'm looking forward to the next iteration and that we continue to uh, work on finding other safe streets and, and continue with this experiment because uh, especially while we're under any sort of emergency uh, or, you know, sort of altered state. It's gonna be important for people to find ways to recreate safely uh, and, and really to get outside and um, you know, move around and, and exercise. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Adam. Last call for public comment on this item. Seeing none, I will close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. Um, I learned a new term on public radio today. Um, highly, highly numerate. Highly numerate was uh, was my favorite new term uh, on the radio today. Uh, dealing with people who are very good with numbers, who understand numbers very well, uh, people like Drew, for example. And I mean, I guess both of the Drews, uh, but uh, specifically Drew Corbett. I think that there, there's a good point to be made that we live in a city of many people who are highly numerate and who understand this data. And we shouldn't, we shouldn't hold back from uh, providing them the data. I just want to make sure that we're not filtering it too much and that we're not uh, creating barriers to it, but that we actually give them whatever raw numbers that they want. Um, uh, and, and if it is that, that it's because of the county hospital or because of some uh, some senior centers or something, then, then that will explain why the numbers are slightly higher in San Mateo than other places in San Mateo County. As a county, we're still doing very well. Um, that's all I have. Are there other comments? Or other responses to the questions? Drew, do you want to bring up your screen? Is there anything that we need to approve going forward?
Um, we just need to affirm the um, affirm the closing of B Street um, prior to June 29th. And then um, just confirm that at, at a minimum, we're gonna keep with the, the virtual meetings only at least through August.
So moved.
And then if I could, I also just wanna, um, if I could get just affirmation from council, because I, I heard it. I, I want to make sure. So what I heard was there was support for us going ahead and, and shutting down some of the, some of the segments of the uh, the, the Safe Streets Initiative where, where there's concerns about safety. Um, as we work to get them moved into other areas. Is that amenable with council?
Yes. Uh, Eric has a comment on that. Go ahead, Eric.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, that's amenable to me. Um, I just want to make sure that um, that doesn't take the pressure off to, to open up, to do the outreach with the neighborhoods and open up another street. Um, I think it's a responsible thing to do now. Um, but uh, I, I think it's a, it's a program that's working and other cities are, are doing it. And um, I, I just want to make sure that we, we continue it as quickly as possible.
Sure, we, we will. And I think it'll, it, it will help to not, not have to go out and, and move signs on a daily basis. And will allow us to focus on, on getting new streets set up. Thank you. Thank you.
So moved as to both. Are, are we all in agreement? Thumbs up?
I am.
Yes, yes, yes. Five yeses.
Thank you.
You're all set, Drew. Thank you so much. Moving on to the next item, we have uh, item 72, item nine. item 72, item nine, November 2020 election. Sean Mason, you have a presentation on ballot arguments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Can you see the presentation?
Yes.
Great. So the purpose of this presentation, this item on the agenda is to allow the council to decide whether to prepare and submit arguments for the voter information guide on the ballot measures to be submitted to the voters at the November election. And then if the council does choose to submit one or more arguments to decide how the arguments will be prepared, the logistics of preparing an argument. So by way of background, the council has already called for the election for the Semitans for Responsive Government Measure that was qualified in 2018. And the council has directed staff to prepare resolutions to call for the elections of two additional measures, an alternative to the SMRG measure and a measure to approve a 2% increase in the transit occupancy tax. So the California Elections Code actually establishes rules on the drafting and submittal of ballot arguments. And there are two sets of rules. One for initiative measures like the SMRG measure and, and another set of rules for council propositions. And the statute on initiative measures provides that the proponents may submit the primary argument in favor. And the council may submit the primary argument in opposition. Statute actually ends there and I incorrectly interpreted, it's in the report, that no one else at the council chooses not to submit an argument can submit an argument. And today, while preparing for this presentation, came across a 2016 case where actually the court said, interpreted the statute to say that if the council does not choose to submit a primary argument in opposition, some other, either individual or association of citizens can submit an opposition argument. So with that correction for your consideration. For the council proposition, the statute provides that the council may submit an argument either in favor or against a measure. And in addition to the council, eligible voters or bona fide associations of citizens may submit arguments on either side of the measure. In addition to the rules about primary arguments, there are rules for rebuttal arguments. And so if, once arguments are submitted, they're sent to the authors of primary arguments on both sides of the matter. And the authors of the primary arguments may then submit a rebuttal argument. And the statutes provide that the authors of the primary arguments may authorize another person or persons to prepare and submit a rebuttal argument. So for the decisions for the council, I'll have slides on each of the measures. So going back to the SMRG measure, the, the council will be asked tonight to decide whether they will prepare and submit an argument in opposition to the measure. If they do choose to submit an argument in opposition, moving to the logistics of how it gets done, ask if the council wants to delegate to drafter, one person or perhaps two, and approve at the July 20 meeting. Or delegate to a drafter and just have the council members sign without having the full council review of the draft. And then another item for discussion is if opposing arguments are submitted, will the council submit a rebuttal argument? Or will the council authorize others to draft a rebuttal? And if the council will sign the rebuttal argument, does the full council want to review and approve? Or again, just have a committee drafted and sign on? With respect to the alternative measure, similar questions, will the council prepare and submit an argument in support of or opposed to the measure? And then again, questions about how it wants to handle the logistics of preparing and approving the, the arguments. And then similar questions with respect to the transit occupancy tax increase measure.
Sean, do we need to make a decision about rebuttal arguments at this point? Or can we wait until opposition arguments have been filed?
You actually don't need to make decisions about any of these questions tonight because the arguments are due in August. So conceptually, you can think about these issues and put off deciding until July 20th. The council ought to be mindful, though, that just limits the amount of time you have, one, to draft the arguments and then make a decision about the actual language. So you might even have to, if you, if you want the full council to approve the language of the argument, that might require the calling of a special meeting between the July 20th meeting and the date that the arguments are due to the city clerk.
I think most of us have tried to draft language during a council meeting and seen how well that works. And I speak for all of us when I say that it doesn't work at all. Okay. Does that end your presentation?
It does.
Thank you so much for that. We have public comment. Anybody mind if I go to the public comment and then we'll come back and run through these questions? I don't see any questions. We'll go to Ms. Natch.
Good evening again, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I firmly believe that all ballot initiatives should have accurate written pro and con statements as part of necessary public education in our democracy. So I'm very glad that it was clarified there would be the opportunity for an opposition to the ballot initiative proposed by SMRG, even if the city didn't write one. The Alternative General Plan Initiative, that is being placed on the ballot by council, it's being placed because the council felt the initiative would have received enough signatures if it weren't for the pandemic shutdown. The council also said it didn't want this initiative to become a quote unquote council initiative. And went so far as to state it didn't want to include the area around the current Bridgepoint Shopping Center to be included in the alternative initiative, because that would change it into a council initiative. And given how consequential this vote is going to be and how important it is for the general plan and the future of San Mateo, and therefore to give the ultimate power to the residents of San Mateo to decide the issue, I would strongly recommend to the council that it doesn't develop or issue a pro or con position on either the initiative sponsored by SMRG or the Alternative General Plan Initiative. City government and staff should be given all support, ensuring that there is widespread opportunity for public education and vigorous debate on both initiatives. And the ultimate decision should be made by the voters without undue influence from the city. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period, bring it back to the council, and we can run through these questions. If you don't mind, I'd like to start with the TOT measure. Do we all agree that we would like to? Well, first of all, do we all support the TOT measure? Did we vote on that yet?
Yes.
You voted to place it on the ballot.
We've placed it on. We placed it on the ballot. I think we all support it. Would, would the, is it the council's pleasure that we draft the argument in favor of the TOT measure? Madam Clerk, would you take a roll call vote on that?
Do you need a second for that motion?
Second.
Sure, I'll take a second. I thought I heard one, I thought I heard one.
Okay, Mayor Gothos.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Pappan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Okay. I guess if someone files an opposition, then is it the pleasure of the council that we would want to draft a rebuttal as well? Does anybody disagree with that? We would draft a rebuttal to, to the opposition if they draft one, if, if anyone drafts one. Sounds good, okay. I think, I see five head nods, so we all agree. As to the TOT measure, we're going to draft the the ballot argument for it. And if someone drafts a, an opposition, we will also draft the rebuttal. I'm going to propose, well, I'll volunteer to help draft that between now and the July 20th meeting. Would anyone in particular like to join me? I would invite the deputy mayor if he wants to join me or anyone else.
I would be happy to join you unless another council member feels strongly that they would like to join you.
Oh, no, I think you two will do a fine job.
I, I think I just saw three people take a step backwards.
All right, I'd love to. That sounds good.
Sean, so we have a subcommittee for the drafting between now and July 20th. We will draft the pro argument and the rebuttal. We got that one done, right?
Yep.
Only two to go. What could go wrong? I would propose that we go to the smurg measure, the, with regards to the smurg measure.
I have a question.
Yes, councilmember, former mayor Pappan, yes.
I have a question. So if it was, because I read the staff report, it's new to me now, this other idea that if council declines, another entity could come forward. And it's a little tricky on the timing because we won't know if another group comes forward to oppose it. Right? Or is there a deadline for some other group to step forward? If there's a vacancy in that department, then council could still come forward? How does this work?
So, so there is a deadline for submitting the arguments. And it is in August. It's in the report, I don't recall offhand. But there is a deadline and there is nothing to prevent any number of folks to submitting arguments in opposition up to that deadline. The statutes, if that happens, then establish priority as to whose arguments go into the voter pamphlet. The council is given priority, is first priority. Second priority is given to a bona fide, that's the language of the statute, bona fide association of citizens. And the third priority is then given to individuals who are eligible to vote on the measure. And so you, you will not know, you're correct, you will not know if no measures, no arguments rather, haven't been submitted up until that deadline. But, but, but there could be more than one argument submitted.
So here's my proposal on this one. I propose that the drafting committee, which has just been formed between myself and the deputy mayor, that we draft language in opposition to the smurg measure. And when we come back on July 20th, if there's an alternative, as Sean has said, if, if some bona fide group has put forward a ballot argument in opposition, we'll have the option to either go with our language or that language.
Through the mayor, this is your city clerk. Can I clarify the deadline dates? And just in case it's valuable to have it in front of you.
Sure.
August 14th is the deadline to get the primary arguments to me. And that's a Friday. And Monday, August 24th is the deadline for rebuttal arguments to be in my hands. So those are both after your July 20th meeting. And it's, yeah, it's just after your July 20th meeting.
And it's before our August meeting?
The August meeting is August 17th, I believe.
The primary, the primary would be due before the August 17th meeting, but not the rebuttal.
So if we were asking the public to step up and also prepare one, it's really just us doing this by public notice through this meeting today and maybe some other methods of communication, saying, please come forward by our July 20 meeting if you would like to prepare an opposition as well? Is that kind of where you were going, Mayor?
Yeah, I have no idea if anyone else is going to draft an opposition. We have voted that we unanimously oppose this measure. I, I think we have strong reasons that we sided during that meeting, having mostly to do with the general plan and wanting to go forward and wanting residents' voices, all residents' voices to be heard through the general plan. Our commitment is strong when it comes to making sure that no zoning changes will happen until the general plan are, are over with. And all of those zoning changes will be reflected, will reflect the, the opinions of those voices that we heard from residents in the general plan. So.
But with respect to timing, with respect to timing.
With respect to timing, yes, I think we should draft one, bring it forward on July 20th. If no one else has better language that we like, we're going to go with our, with our opposition, our language, our ballot argument. Does that make sense? Sorry, I was pretty wordy, I apologize. Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, I want to just share a couple of thoughts. And I'm going to be touching on some of the thoughts on, on the next item because they directly relate to what I think we should do with the smurg measure. And I kind of, I disagree with the, as to the best path forward. And I think that, I guess to lead with the, the ending, I think that it makes sense that, well, given, given my position last meeting and I believe our, the majority's position on the alternative measure, we put it on the ballot mostly, at least what we, what we said was because the coronavirus prevented the proponents from completing the signature gathering process. And I do not view that initiative as a city council measure since we did not write it, we did not study it, we did not conduct any public outreach like we did with just the just mentioned TOT tax. Since it is not our measure, I don't think it's appropriate that we should be writing any arguments for or against it. And so I would be proposing on that measure that we allow the, the actual alternative measure proponents to write their own pro argument as if COVID-19 never happened and they were successful in placing the measure on themselves. And, and it makes sense to me then that they should be the ones to write the argument against the measure P extension along with the rebuttal. And then that comes to our discussion we're talking right now. On, on the other side, of course, smurg is going to be writing their pro argument, that's their right. But I think it, it's only fair that the proponents of the alternative measure should be the ones that write the argument against that measure and the rebuttal. And I think that if we do this, it will be a fairer process. It will, it will allow this council to not be getting, not unduly influencing the election process and tipping the scales in one way or the other. So I wanted to throw that out there.
So I'm, I'm going to give a counter view for a couple of reasons. So one is our, our position with regards to the smurg measure has to do with the fact that we have put forward the most robust general plan process ever and that this measure would actually get in the way of democracy, wouldn't allow the voices of so many of our residents to be heard, and that's why we all unanimously oppose it. And I don't think it's wrong for us to, to actually say that in a ballot argument, to say this, this is wrong and we're opposed to it for these reasons, because it's undemocratic and, and won't allow the voices of our residents to be heard. Whereas we're proposing this general plan process that will allow our residents to be heard in the most democratic way possible. And that way, the future San Mateo actually reflects the will of the voters. With regards to the alternative, with regards to the alternative, I, I don't think that this is one or the other. I don't think that every resident in San Mateo is looking at this as if you either have to vote yes on smurg or yes on, on the alternative. I think some people are approaching this and saying, I don't want to vote for either one of them because I believe in the general plan. Some people will vote no on both of these measures because they believe the general plan is the best way to go about doing this. And they have, they have their reasons for doing that, their reasons are really encapsulated. And they have, they have their reasons for doing that. Their reasons are really encapsulated in what I just mentioned. Will be our ballot argument against the smurg measure.
Let me ask you this.
So it's not either or. That's my, that's my point.
Well, let me ask you this, Mayor. Would you be in favor of, of the alternative measure proponents writing the pro argument for their own measure?
I do think that that's the best course.
Okay, so that's then who, and then who's going to write, who's going to write the argument against that measure? Would you feel comfortable, we as a council feel comfortable having smurg do that?
I, so I haven't taken a position on the alternative yet. I see it is vastly superior to the smurg measure. If I had to vote right now, I would either vote against smurg, for the alternative, or against smurg and against the alternative, because I want to see that general plan go forward in the best way possible. I want residents to have their voices heard during the general plan. So I don't, I don't see it as either or. I think that the alternative measure is best articulated by the proponents, so they can write the pro ballot argument. And if there's an organization, a bona fide organization that feels they can articulate an argument against it, then that's something we'll have to wait and see.
I have some thoughts I'd like to share, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Benio.
Thank you. So I've been listening. I appreciate Diane's comments, Eric's comments, and now more recently, your comments. But I also have to say that I listened, Mr. Nash wrote a letter, an email today that I found struck me because he did make a couple of points regarding the appearance maybe that some people might have of the council putting their thumb on the scale somehow, right? I heard Ms. Nash speak again this evening. And at this point, you know, I do agree that so far as the alternative measure goes, we should let those proponents form their own argument in favor. Whether it is one against or not, I think is none of my business. I actually think the council should stay out of the argument business on both of the measures. And the reason on the measure P is my new position. I know previously I've said we have to submit argument against. But we've been saying we want the most robust general plan update process possible. And I think when it comes to people voting, it will influence some people's opinions about this if they feel that the council has put its finger, its thumb on the scale somehow. I really would recommend that we do not submit an argument against smurg or for, or vice versa, the alternative measure. And simply leave it up. I know that there are proponents for the alternative measure. They will put up a good argument. And I know that the, there are many people who support housing in a city who feel that measure P is way wrong. They're going to put up an argument against measure P. And that's them. That's the people talking. This is democracy in action. So that's my feeling. We should stay out of the argument business on these two and leave that to members of the public.
Anyone else want to be heard? Seeing none? I hear so I hear a majority saying that we are not going to submit a ballot argument on the alternative. I hear a majority of the council saying that we are not going to submit a ballot argument on the alternative at all. Sean, did you hear that too? Close enough?
I think so. Yeah, I think so.
I mean, can I, can I just go a little bit farther than that and say that we as a council believe that the proponents of the measure should be the ones putting that argument forward? I mean, who else would it be?
Whoever statutorily can submit a ballot argument, it, the proponents. Yeah, they're, just like with measure P, there are three people who signed the petition to start gathering the signatures, so. It falls in the same category, but it also can go to the statutory or or the under precedent. It can go to bona fide organizations and even individuals.
A question for the city attorney. Would it be helpful if council gave the election officer or a city clerk some direction on who we think might be the most appropriate third party, all else held equal, on who should be writing these arguments?
Yes, I think so, because under the statute, if conceivably, it's possible that more than one bona fide group would submit arguments. And the statute then leaves up to the city elections official, in this case, the city clerk, to decide which one. And the statute provides no further guidance on, on any preference. It's just really left up to the clerk. So if the council believes that if two different organizations submit arguments in favor of the alternative measure, the proponents, and that's somebody else. If the council believes that the proponents, their argument should be the one that's put in the ballot, it would be helpful to provide that direction to the clerk.
Well, my thoughts on that is it's pretty obvious that the proponents of that measure should be the ones to write the four arguments, just as smurg are going to be writing their four arguments. I mean, or else we're leaving it up to shenanigans, somebody else writing it. I mean, who else?
I support letting the proponents write the support argument for the alternative measure.
Would the city clerk be mandated by our direction, or how does it work?
The statute indicates that it's the decision of the clerk. But I suspect that if the majority of the council gives her direction as to what their preference would be, that she'll probably follow that.
The clerk, yes.
He's a wise city clerk.
I would concur that it seems like it should go to the proponents of it. They should be allowed to make their cogent, compelling arguments that they want to make. They're the most vested, certainly.
Okay, so I believe I have now heard from a majority of the council that the drafting committee is going to write a ballot argument for the T O T and nothing else.
I like that.
And the proponents will, the proponents of each ballot measure will write their ballot arguments in favor. And whoever wants to submit a ballot argument against can feel free to do so.
So I'd just like to again repeat that, sure, anybody may submit a ballot argument against, but I believe the prudent thing to do for this council would be that if this council is not writing these arguments, and we get multiple arguments from different groups, I believe that the right decision would be to have the smurg group write the against argument for the alternative measure. And have the alternative measure proponents write the negative argument for the measure P extension. If, if we get multiple groups, that's who should have preference. Who else would it be?
Well, I like the part you said about if we get multiple groups, but when it comes to this end of it, I think I would support letting the clerk select the best argument there.
I'm not totally sure if we have a clear majority, but I, I don't I, I don't have concerns with, with the optics of tipping the scale. I believe that the council has acted in good faith with good information and a solid analysis to take a position of opposition. And I'm, I for one would, would, would be fine moving forward with, with writing the opposition as a council. If the council is not, you know, in a clear majority on that, that's fine, but I, I don't I don't think that we need to shy away from taking a position that we've already taken and making it known that, you know, very clearly and explicitly directly to the voters what our rationale is.
Yeah, in many ways, we did that in our last council meeting. I appreciate that we're trying to find some, or that deputy mayor Rodriguez is trying to find some symmetry in who writes these ballot arguments. And I don't know that symmetry is necessarily obvious, given that both of these measures are a restriction on what the council can do. Both of these measures are in many ways doing the same things in that they protect the single-family neighborhoods from upzoning. Both of these measures are continuing this San Mateo ballot box zoning to protect single-family neighborhoods. And the only way in which that they really diverge is that the alternative allows for for a process where the voters get to get to work with the council and the residents of San Mateo could decide that closer to transit, we could have more density. It's they are not, they are not diametrically opposed to each other. They're just, the symmetry is not there, and I I think it makes sense to let the proponents of each of these, the people who drafted them and who gathered the signatures or started gathering the signatures, be the one to make the ballot argument for. I, I don't know that anybody's going to choose to. I certainly am not going to force smurg to write a ballot argument against the alternative if that's not their, their choice to do so, so. Nor vice versa. If, if the alternative doesn't want to write the ballot argument against the smurg measure, I, I I'm not prepared to go there.
I don't want to be practical here. They're going to write the arguments. Why wouldn't they? I mean, it's, I mean, of course, we don't know for sure, and we haven't talked with them, but to say that we don't know that the alternative proponents would, if there was going to be no argument against measure P extension, they wouldn't step in and write an alternative or an argument against? I mean, I think that's just an unreasonable assumption to make.
I think, I think that we should allow for whoever wants to write the ballot argument against these measures to write. And I don't know who that's going to be. And if it's no one, then it's no one. I don't think it's right to force somebody to, force an organization to write one that they don't want to write. And if they choose to write it, then that's the ballot argument that will happen. It may turn out exactly the way you're proposing. Eric, I just don't want, I don't want either of these organizations to point the finger at us and say, we only wrote that ballot argument because the council told us to.
No, we have until July 20th. We can think about this until July 20th and see what happens.
Well, what I do know is that the, the council drafting committee is coming up with a ballot argument in favor of the T O T. So we, we will return on July 20th with that language. And we as a council don't have to return with anything else. But we will have an update at the July 20th meeting as to who has drafted ballot arguments and what those ballot arguments might be.
But we do have an option this evening to not kick the can down the road and at least decide and let the two proponents of both sides know that they're going to be the ones drafting it. And give them enough time so we're not, we're not waiting till the last minute and doing that. So we can do that tonight.
Yes, anyone who wants to write a ballot argument in opposition to any of these measures, including our T O T, should be writing that, that language right now so that they can submit it and and the city clerk will decide based on our direction, who's going, whose ballot argument will be used. I don't think there's anything else for us to do on this.
We left the title for the alternative measure open at the last meeting. Do we want to talk about that? Different language had been submitted.
It's coming back on July 20th.
Okay, good. Thanks.
If I may ask a question of the city attorney, do we, do you need any more feedback from us? Like, is it, is it clear? I mean, it's not clear to me if we are making the decision officially tonight that the proponents are going to be the ones writing the four arguments? Or are we waiting till someone, future time to make that decision?
So what I've heard is a majority of the council supporting the, the concept that S M R G, well, that's by law, they'll write their pro argument for their measure. And that if there are multiple pro arguments for the alternative, and one of those is written by the proponents of that alternative, that that one, they're expressing a preference for that one to the clerk. With respect to the opposition arguments, I haven't heard any preference, you know, any direction given to the clerk as to who the council would prefer if there are multiple submittals of arguments in opposition.
I agree with what the city attorney just said. I believe that's the will of the council at this point. I think that's it, and I think you're bringing us back everything else on July 20th.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Moving on, we have new business, item number 10. The planning pre-application process, modifications to approved applications. We have a presentation from Aaron Ackman.
Thank you and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Let me share my screen here. All right, can everyone see it there?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right, tonight we are looking at potential changes to the city's planning pre-application process, and specifically for when projects are requesting modifications to approved applications. Before we jump into it, this is actually going to be step one of a two-step process. Later this summer, you'll be hearing the second step, and it specifically relates to potential code changes. In San Mateo, there's a rather unique process. There's a three-phase process. The first has to do with pre-application review, and not every city has this. So for larger developments, there's a resolution pass that states that the developer must host a neighborhood meeting to get neighborhood input prior to an official planning application being submitted. There's also a planning commission study session required to get feedback from the planning commission prior to an official application being submitted. The second step is the official planning application. So this is when you do your zoning code review, your environmental review, the schematic plans. This could take anywhere from three months to three years, depending on the size of the development. And it ultimately gets approved by the zoning administrator, the planning commission, or for some larger projects, the city council. Now, after this place, that's the final of the discretionary review process. After that, it goes into the building code review. And to put it in perspective, this is a very detailed review. And the planning applications, you might have 20 to 30 pages worth of plans. When you go on to the building code, there could be 100 to 150 pages worth of plans. And because of that, there's often modifications requested to the planning document. Now, these modifications, here are some examples of recent modifications. It could be parking striping changes, it could be landscaping changes, minor changes to the floor area. The reason that we're forwarding you here tonight is that even when there are these minor changes, because of the way that the code's written, because of the way the pre-application process is adopted by resolution, the project essentially has to restart the entire process for that pre-application. So a large 100-unit development project wants to make changes to the windows, the appearance. They have to currently host a new pre-application neighborhood meeting. They have to host a planning commission meeting just for that window change, or just for that roof pitch change. And that really could delay an application from anywhere from three or four months. That application also has to go through a, not only the pre-application process, but then also has to go back to the planning commission, the zoning administrator, or the council for final approval, and then it has to again move on to the building review stage for the construction documents. So what we are proposing tonight is changes to the council's resolution that it was essentially saying, when you have an approved So what we are proposing tonight is changes to the council's resolution that it was essentially saying, when you have an approved application and you want to make these changes post entitlement, you don't have to go through this pre-application process. Now, you still have to go through the planning application review. So you still have that public hearing component. It still has to go to the planning commission, still has to go to the council, but you don't have to go through that entire process. And of course, it would still have to undergo the building review. So in summary, this change proposed tonight would not affect new developments. All new developments have to go through the same process of pre-application, planning application, and building code review. It would amend the council resolution to no longer require planning applications, modifications to go through that pre-application process. And third, as I mentioned earlier, we are going to bring forward a set of code amendments to the council in August that will distinguish things like substantial compliance, a technical term, but really what it means is if someone proposes a minor change to a planning application, it can be approved through the building permit process or approved by the zoning administrator rather going, rather than going to the planning commission. But that's a subject for another night. Tonight, we're just looking at the planning application, pre-application process. So with that, I could take any questions.
There's a strong downside to not doing this. Is that, is that fair to say, Aaron?
Yes, there is. I would say the strongest downside is in particular for housing applications, this can delay it for three, four, five months for something that's very minor. The other downside is it takes up a substantial amount of staff time. So staff could end up putting together numerous staff reports, attending meetings for what is really a minor change to an application.
And on top of all of that, even though we're adding all of that time and all of that cost to the applicant, what we, what we might get from the applicant could be a proposal that we don't like as much. By forcing them to go back to the drawing board, we could lose things like, like parking, we could lose other amenities that the applicant is not required to provide. And so creating this level of flexibility by saving this time and money for the applicant, we could be getting better projects. Is that fair to say?
Yes, that's fair to say. And also you could oftentimes, the applicant is having to be consistent with building code requirements to make the building safer. One example is an application that will be before the planning commission who is changing their roof angles to have solar panels attached to save energy overall. So there are changes, energy efficiency changes, code changes that happen later that may not be captured if you have to go through the pre-application process.
At the same time, this isn't taking away from the transparency because as you mentioned, there's still going to be this public process. There's still going to be a zoning administrator to make sure that the public is being represented in cases where an applicant might want to take things out of the project that the public enjoyed at the beginning.
Correct. There will still be notification to the neighborhood. There'll still be a hearing before whichever body approved the project in the first place.
Are there questions from the council?
I have a question.
Go for it, Rick.
Sure. Aaron, isn't it true that if the zoning administrator makes the decision that there's a 10-day appeal period?
That's correct. You could also, it can be appealed to the planning commission.
Right. So we make it public and then there's a 10-day appeal period. So I, I don't think that the public is losing out on process there. Isn't it? Also, yeah, always save that for comments. Thank you, Aaron.
Great. We'll go to public comment now. Anyone want to make public comment on this item? I don't have any hands at this time. I'm going to give it one more second. Anyone who wants to make public comment on this agenda item can make it now by raising your hand. Any attendees seeing none, I will close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for any final comments.
Well, I'd like to just say something first, but Diane's got the motion here.
Don't try to steal the motion from Diane. Diane's got it. She called it.
No, I'll refrain, I'll refrain. I want to hear what you get to say.
She got dibs. She got dibs on the motion.
Right. So I just want to add that this has grown to be a difficulty on a few different projects now. And it's something that we can easily fix. And it's for us a simple change. But what it does in the eyes of people who work with our city and building and planning department, it takes another hurdle out of the way because the city is already known by many builders as being a place that takes some time to get an approval through. And, you know, it must be noted that if the project takes three or four more months for staff to work on it to get, take it back through the process, that's also money. Somebody's paying all that money. So it stretches the timeline out. It makes an already arduous process even more so. So what we're doing tonight is a very positive thing and I strongly support it. Thanks.
I would concur. And there's enough stopgaps that the public will be protected. So I'm, I appreciate the streamlining. I'm ready to go with it, but I don't want to cut anybody off of their comments.
I, I just wanted to compliment Kohar and team and, and Aaron because I, we've, the council has been asking where are there opportunities to streamline process? And this, this one not only protects the public process, but it also saves staff resources and time. It saves time and resources for the developers. And, and that it makes us more adaptable to, to, to do things like allow for, for upgrades, for sustainability improvements that, that, that we want to, we want to create the flexibility and support. So I, I am so happy to see this come forward.
I just want to echo one of the things that you just said, which is that I love Kohar Kajayan. I have enjoyed working with Kohar very much. And I am extremely proud of all of the work that she has done for the residents of San Mateo. And we are better off for having been served by her as our CDD director. And I could not be more grateful.
Second.
Diane has made the motion. Rick, I'm going to say you're seconding the motion and I will ask our clerk for a roll call.
Councilmember Pappen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonia.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Gossels.
Yes.
Carried 5-0.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Aaron, for the presentation. Onto our final agendized item of the evening, item number 11, Concar Passage, the mixed-use project and the community benefits. We were just speaking about her and here she is.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Gossels and members of the council. And thank you for those sweet words. Kohar Kajayan, Community Development Director. And I will be doing the presentation tonight along with Ben Sigmund from Economic and Planning Systems, who the city retained to help prepare this feasibility analysis for the Concar Passage. Just to note for the public listening in, there are no decisions, final decisions being made tonight. Staff is just requesting some high-level council policy direction for this project. So as most of you already know, the Passage project has been going through the city's entitlement process for a couple of years. We are towards the tail end of that review process now. The project includes redevelopment of the Concar Shopping Center into a mixed-use development with 961 family units, multifamily units, commercial retail space, a daycare center, community open space, and a mobility hub, one of the first in the city. As part of the project entitlements, the developer is also seeking a development agreement. As most of you know, a development agreement is a voluntary entitlement, which allows developers to vest standards for a certain term in exchange for providing benefits beyond those that could be required under the city standards. So those are, that's the community benefits component of the process. At the April 6th council meeting a few months ago, we discussed community benefits and the council provided direction on the method to determine benefits and the type of improvements that should be included in a community benefits program. The council also prioritized improvements in the immediate neighborhood, which were responsive to community input, as well as approved a menu of benefits for staff to use as guidance as we go through the project. Following the April 6th meeting, staff retained EPS to prepare a feasibility analysis of the project in order to guide the community benefits discussion specific for the Passage project. We also retained EPS to help us put together the overall community benefits guidelines, which will be coming to you later this summer. The staff also put together a negotiating team on behalf of the city, which includes the city manager, the city attorney, the public works director, the project planner, and myself. And after we received the feasibility analysis, which EPS prepared, which Ben will walk you through just a little bit, we determined that we needed some high-level council direction on the benefits for this project. The negotiation is still ongoing and no final deal terms have been made at this time, including monetary values. We haven't agreed upon those yet. Those will come at a later date. And tonight, we're just looking for some overall council direction. I'll now pass it to Ben. I will run the PowerPoint for him and he can walk us through the feasibility analysis that he put together.
Great. Thank you, Kohar. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Ben Sigmund, Principal with Economic and Planning Systems. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. So as Kohar described, our firm undertook an economic analysis to look at potential contributions the development might make to community benefits in return for the development agreement. We used essentially three economic lenses or analytic lenses through which to consider the potential contribution of the project above and beyond fees and other benefits that they've already included in their application. We looked at transportation perspective. The project will have some transportation impacts that are not addressed through its SEQA process. And so the study, the city has done a study of improvements in the 19th Avenue corridor. And we established with city staff's help, a fair share of the cost of those improvements. We did what we're calling a benefit burden test. We have a sort of industry threshold contribution that projects typically can make for all kinds of public infrastructure, including their typical fee burden that they're paying as a sort of statutory requirement, as well as above and beyond contributions to, to public facilities. And so we, I'll, I'll walk you through it, but that was a second lens of analysis. And then we did a essentially a valuation of the vested rights. When you do a development agreement, it creates some surety and security for the entitlement. And we, we analyzed that through a risk reduction analysis that I'll, I'll tell you a little bit about. Overall, just real quick before we get there, we just want to show that range, Kohar, of about 2.2 to 3.3 million dollars. We think the project can reasonably be asked to pay above and beyond its, its sort of base contributions. And we average them out, straight average, not weighted, at about 2.7 million. I think that's the number that sort of gets carried through the reporting here. So just to, to keep that in mind, that 2.7 is the average of the three methods. So this is a graphic produced by the city. It shows a range of improvements along 19th Avenue and up the Fashion Boulevard area. And, you know, the, there are essentially eight distinct pieces. They can be taken down sort of one at a time or all at once. And the, the overall price tag for this package is about 9.6 million dollars. That's today's dollars. It doesn't include escalation. But it does include all of your planning and design and sort of implementation costs. So it's a pretty all-inclusive figure. And we have folks on staff here could tell you a little bit more about this. I know that this is sort of a new study. You're aware that it's happened, but you, I know you haven't gotten into the details. And so we may do that tonight. But we established that the Concar Passage project is responsible for about 23% of this total improvement. The way that that was established was through looking at the, the Concar project or the Passage project, along with eight other major projects that have been approved or under construction at the moment, are really contributing to the the sort of urgent need for improvements in this corridor in the, in the near term. So, yep, about 23% of that 9.6 million gets us that 2.2 million dollar fair share contribution. That's our, our first lens. Okay. The second approach was to look at what we call a, a public benefit burden test. Again, there's sort of an industry standard. It's, it's a rule of thumb, if you will, that real estate development projects like this one, sort of major projects can contribute typically under normal economic conditions. About 15% of their finished value, that's their market value in, in today, towards all kinds of community improvements that are essentially off-site or, or public in their, their use and function. And that's, you know, sort of in average. We valued this project at about 660 million dollars, delivered the 960 units and the commercial space included. And the 15% of that gets you to about 98, 99 million dollars in potential public contribution across all of the various things the project's already providing, which range from transportation-related improvements and daycare, theater, as well as quite a bit of value in the below-market-rate housing component of the project. We estimate that package at about 95 million dollars as is. And so the delta between the, the 15% sort of threshold and this 95 million is about 3.3 million dollars. It's a, it's a relatively coarse estimate, but, but yeah, a typical project of 15% with this valuation, we'd expect almost 99 million dollars in public benefits and we're getting about 95. So that's how we got to the additional $3 million ask through this lens. And then lastly, the valuation of vested rights is essentially trying to estimate a value for exactly what they're getting out of the, the development agreement, which is increased certainty, reduces their risk and in an economic or financial framework, what that means, reduced risk means a, a lower rate of return that the developer would be willing to accept on the capital investment to build the project. We targeted about a 14% internal rate of return for the project. We used our own in-house data and a little bit of information gathered from the applicant and other projects we're working on, as well as a seven-year period for project stabilization. We don't expect the project would actually sell after seven years. It's sort of the analytic frame that we designed for it. It's sort of typical underwriting. And what we had to assume is essentially a 1% reduction in the IRR. It's, it's relatively crude, but I think realistic given what they are receiving. So the 14% rate of return, we, we lower and so there'd be indifferent between a 14% return with the DA, or, excuse me, without the DA and a 13.85% return with the DA. And what, what that essentially equals in present value terms is about 2.6 million dollars. So I know sort of some financial calculations there that are relatively difficult to describe, but included in our, in our memo. And I'm happy to, you know, talk to you further about any of the details of the three lenses. And we feel like the range gives us some, it's relatively tight, some comfort that we're in the ballpark. And I think initial discussions with the applicant suggest we're in the ballpark. And I know tonight, the staff wants to speak with you about some of the trade-offs. I think we're, you know, we've sort of established what the reasonable ask will be as part of this process. But, you know, there is some, I think, ability to trade off some of the proposed benefits in the project, such as the moderate-rate housing for cash or other things. And so I think that's where the action of the discussion is tonight. And I hope I didn't steal anyone's fire by bringing that up. So Kohar, with that, let me turn it back to you.
Thank you, Ben, for that excellent summary. As you know, although housing is, is important, there is equal value to improving our infrastructure and circulation and transportation in the city. And as you saw in the report, as Ben just described, the applicant is providing the required 10% very low units for meeting our below-market-rate program. But they're also providing an additional 5% of moderate units, which are not required. It, it's above and beyond. And moderate units in San Mateo are a bit of a white elephant. Sandy can provide some more, you know, explanation if need be, but the rents are very close to market and we have found that over the years, they are just very difficult to rent, rent out. As an example, we have had over three moderate units that have remained vacant over the last couple of months. Here in, here in town, we've tried a wide variety of marketing strategies and we're trying a new one out now. But it's just, they're difficult because you could get something in town that's a little bit older, but that costs a little bit less than some of the mod units that are, that are newly built. So with the large amount of subsidy needed for those So with the large amount of subsidy needed for those moderate units and the much-needed improvements to the 19th Avenue corridor, which has been under review for a little while with Public Works, staff felt that it was appropriate to ask council for that high-level direction on what to prioritize, which I know is a hard question to answer, you know, housing or transportation. But with approximately $5 million subsidy that's going into building those moderate units and the much-needed transportation impacts, we did think it was something necessary to bring forward to you. Over the last couple of years, we've had multiple neighborhood meetings, study sessions, and the community feedback that we've received to date is mostly tailored around traffic concerns and transportation concerns. So in line with the council's direction from April 6 about keeping community benefits near the project site, we felt that there needs to be some, there could be some trade off here with those moderate units, but wanted to bring that for you tonight. So the purpose again tonight is to receive your feedback and direction on whether or not all or a portion of the subsidy could be, for the moderate units, should be allocated towards transportation improvements near the project site. Those improvements are not, have not yet been completely vetted. They are unfunded, but they are in the process of being analyzed by our Public Works Department. They'll go through a community process. But during this point in time for the development agreement, staff just needs some direction from the council on which which way we should take the negotiations. So with that, we're, that concludes our presentation. Brad and his team are here to answer questions, as well as my team can answer questions related to housing. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Kohar. And let's start with questions from the council. Any council members, before we go to public comment, want to ask questions? Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Give me here. I was wondering if if Public Works or Community Development, I'm not sure. I guess I'm not sure who would have this, but whenever similar projects like this come before the planning commission and ultimately council, sometimes we get like a map of of just like how much the interchanges, the traffic is is changing, the different grade levels. And I was just curious, I I read in the report that that the the traffic levels were were going to be worse than expected. But could you kind of get, can you paint a little bit of color around like how how much worse and where at? And 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 why these projected projects would perhaps alleviate those, that worsening traffic?
Sure, I'll let Brad take that one on.
Yeah, so I have Bethany Lopez on the on the call with me, and she has more of the details. But we did analyze the level of service as well. Not as part of SEQA, obviously, because SEQA now is just a vehicle miles traveled. So I'll ask Bethany to describe some of the details that you're asking for in the level of service analysis, which we believe the improvements that are outlined, or at least portion of them, will take care of those, the issues that that we were finding in that report. Bethany, you want to give some details?
Sure. Can you guys hear me okay here?
Yes.
Great. So the analysis that was completed was done a little bit differently than how a lot of the analysis is normally completed. We did a simulation analysis, which was needed because some of the, excuse me, because of the way that the Fashion Island Boulevard corridor functions currently, because of the amount of backup that's seen on that as a result of a lot of the cut-through traffic, we wanted to make sure that we were analyzing it properly. And so what we found with that analysis was a lot of the delay was related to some of the on-ramps, people coming off of the on-ramp, or, excuse me, off of the ramps onto the Fashion Island Boulevard corridor. And then there was some delay at the Fashion Island and Norfolk intersection that was seen as well. So the the extent that the intersections increased, they were already operating at level of service F, which is pretty bad. And the amount that they increased was fairly substantial, but it's a little bit difficult to compare one to one the way that these values came out compared to what other analyses would have shown. But they do show to get to a worse level of level of service F. So.
Like F minus, minus?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, and then I guess one, well, I guess I'll wait until public comment before some other questions. Thank you.
Anybody who doesn't think Public Works is working really hard right now, hasn't looked at that beard. Go ahead, Emirates. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Kohar, I was hoping you could provide some more detail about about why you're making the assessment that that moderate income affordable units are are less desirable and hold a lower sort of community benefit. You know, I think a lot of, a lot of folks who, including the council, who want to prioritize affordable housing, I think, well, you know, it's perplexing to hear that, 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 that moderate affordable is vacant. And and so I know that we have, there's been some important changes to the the AMI, which has sort of shifted categories. I thought maybe if you could speak to that. And then also, we recently did the Mid Penn, we did a survey for the Mid Penn project, which I thought would be relevant to this conversation.
Yes, so Sandy can answer those questions.
Yes, good evening. This is Sandy, Council Housing Manager. And.
The applicant wants to speak. Rick, we can hear you. Okay, go ahead.
So first of all, as Councilmember Lee indicated, council, the rest of the council may recall, over the last couple of years, I've come before you several times talking about the significant increase in median income in in San Mateo County, San Francisco area. We're all one regional statistical area. And so when you talk about moderate incomes, it's based on the state's published incomes each year. And then, once you identify the income level, then rents are calculated off that, roughly assuming one-third of one's income could go to rent. So just for example, right now, for the brand-new 2020 incomes that were just posted, a one-person moderate household is $120,000, and a four-person household is $171,000. And so those incomes are much higher than what we've traditionally considered moderate, I think, over the years for our housing programs. And, for example, a one-bedroom at this category results in a rent around $2,800 a month. And depending on the assumptions that you use to calculate that. And we did a recent rent survey, if you will, just looking at rents around town about a month ago, and found that there's an awful lot of one-bedroom apartments in nicely maintained, older buildings, not luxury, not the brand-new luxury things, but places like Lake Shore Landing, Hillsdale Gardens, Laurel Crossing, et cetera. And and the rents tend to range from like $2,400 to to up to $3,000. And so in many cases, these moderate income units would be the same or even higher than market rate one-bedroom apartments. And we find that that's been a challenge in renting those. We have out at Bridge Point, which are nice, lovely apartments. As Kohar mentioned before, three units, they're available at $2,860 right now that that they're having a hard time renting, because people know they can, they can get something a little less expensive, that's still quite nice. And then the survey that Councilmember Lee was referring to was, as you recall, when we first started working on the downtown sites' properties, our ideal was to have this range of incomes and include moderate income households, as well as lower-income households to serve out there. And as we were trying to test what people's interest would be in some higher rents in addition to the very low affordable rents, we tested $2,500 a month for a one-bedroom. And and this was a survey we did for public employees. 700 employees from school districts, city, and county responded. And there was a lot of resistance to $2,500 a month for a one-bedroom, even even brand-new downtown, close to transit, close to shopping. We had a lot of both statistical resistance to those rents, as well as a lot of comments like, what? This is affordable? You've got to be crazy. So even though somebody, the takeaway we got from that information, and this was similar information we got from an employee survey that the city did just on our own employees three years ago, was that although someone might mathematically be able to afford, you know, $25,000 or $28,000, 28, excuse me, $2,500 or $2,800 a month based on their income, they they don't perceive that as a very good deal and and resist it. So so our conclusion is moderate income rentals are are not really getting us anything right now, since the the market has older housing stock, not brand-new gorgeous, you know, luxury housing, but does have stock available at those price points.
So, I mean, you have such a deep expertise in this, Sandy. And so I I think it's really, it would be really valuable to hear what it, what do you feel like, you know, the, what kind of housing product do you feel will really meet the need of the the missing middle or our workforce, for example, or sort of the the employee bracket that we're trying to 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 reach when we talk about, you know, that that income category and moderate range? And I'm, I think it's helpful to hear where, you know, what is the product do you feel like the, we should be going after if it's not this?
Well, there's a couple of things. On the rental side, if the rents were just lower, but still available to people who make the missing middle incomes, that would be attractive to people. And then also, ownership opportunities for that group is also still attractive.
So that would be, or could be, things like townhomes or condos, or also preserving naturally affordable existing housing. Is that right, Sandy?
So all of those things that you mentioned are ways to get housing. So they're all valuable ways to get housing. In the end, it comes to the price point.
Right. Let me go back. Before we move on, I want to give the applicant an opportunity. Brian Myers is with us, and I believe he has a presentation. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to be with you tonight. And actually, I don't have a presentation. I just have a couple of comments. I'll make it very brief. I just wanted to let Mayor and the and the council, my name is Brian Myers, by the way. I'm partner in California Coastal Properties and the applicant for passages at San Mateo. I only wanted to make a couple of comments regarding the staff report, just for clarification, frankly. I wanted to compliment the city's consultant. I want to tell you that EPS really did a thorough analysis for a third party and that, you know, a bit handicapped, because they didn't have all of our details, which are proprietary to our partnership. But I really compliment them for thorough analysis. And while we're, our analysis is a little bit different, the order of magnitudes are not really that significant, and really left us in a position where we could negotiate fairly, I think, with the staff, which we're beginning to do, over the the right amounts and fees and public benefit. So they did do fine work. When we initiated the process, I just wanted to let the council know that when we initiated the process, we did make it clear that the benefit, as EPS mentioned in this case, to our project, is not really all that pronounced, but it is an exchange of some additional security that's worth pursuing for us. Since we're consistent with the general plan, the zoning and measure H limits, there really aren't any city requirements that we're not meeting for our projects. So the development agreement really just adds an additional level of security that's more perceived and real for our future lenders, et cetera. So we realize that, and we're not trying to discount it. We wanted to pursue this development agreement. But we had to have discipline around what we could afford in our budget. As you saw in the report, we're already providing an estimate of of over $95 million worth of public benefit and public improvements, both in fees and improvements around our site, which is a substantial value to the community. We're excited about that. It's really part of our package, and we've really tried to listen to the community over priorities. We completely agree with the council's previous direction about focusing our benefit from the DA to prioritize improvements in the nearby neighborhoods. We've heard the same from nearby neighborhoods about local traffic improvements, and specifically, by the way, 19th Avenue. It's been a big discussion point for most of the neighbors that we've met with and HOAs that we've met with. And I'm glad that that came to the top. Again, I don't know, and it's a whole nother discussion about how much those HOAs have been exposed to from that improvement package. So we're looking forward to that, that that process where they can get some input on those improvements as well. But again, we know that there's some needs for improvements there. So unfortunately, we don't have a budget to cover all of those improvements. And while we recognize negotiation, we've been pretty transparent with the with the staff about what our limits are. And I think we've been negotiating fairly. So I just want to let you know that we're open to this discussion tonight about reallocating some of that public benefit back towards higher priorities, if that's something you want to discuss. And we're really open for any one of those categories. I know the focus is to tonight about affordable housing. We've read in the past that affordable housing is a pretty important asset to the community. Whether we hit it right or not is really kind of the subject of discussion tonight. We all tried to take our our best shot at what's what's the most meaningful to the community. But that really was our offer at the moment, but we're flexible to have those discussions. So I'm open for questions that you might have for us, and just wanted to make myself available for that. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian.
So I have questions.
Let's go back to the council for questions at this point, especially questions for the applicant or for anyone.
Okay, so in these proposed traffic improvements, there hasn't really been an analysis about how good they'll be, right? This is just kind of a wish list in and around the area, but I guess, let me back, let me rephrase the question. How is it that you came up with this list, and how confident are you that this list will have a positive impact?
So, yeah, Councilmember Pappin, Mayor. We, we've had a study that we've been working on since last year, so the study's nearly complete. And so we're nearly finalizing that, and we'll take that to the to the public community. But, yeah, we we believe that this will have some significant improvement to the corridor of 19th Avenue, Fashion Island Boulevard, as the council had a priority to, you know, look at some of our major congested corridors. This is one of them, of course.
Okay, so. Rick, you want to go next? Thank you. So Brad, your response is basically what Brian was just referring to, the applicant, just before you got on, which is that he doesn't know how much exposure the public has had to these planned improvements. You're saying that you will take it to the public. And so really, we right now have no idea what the public thinks regarding those planned improvements. Is that correct?
I wouldn't say that's fully true. I'm sorry, I'm moving about. I'm outside, actually.
Looks like you're having an earthquake.
Yeah. I wouldn't say that's fully true. We've engaged them on this study that we've been doing. So while they haven't seen the final results, they they've been aware, the group in Fiesta Gardens, at least, have been aware of some of what we're looking at. So that's what we've been waiting for, to finalize the the actual report, so we can actually go to them then and get more feedback out of this.
Okay, I I only ask that because in letters I got today, that seems to be the point of contention. People are talking about 19th Avenue. So.
Yeah, well, that's, that's been something that has been on since I think I started here with the TAP program, the Traffic Action Plans, you know, five years ago. That's been one of their main main issues since then. So nothing's really changed. It's just that we haven't gone through much of the the details of the report. I will tell you that one segment in 19th that is one-way, that's one of the interests that they've had since I've been here is to agree in that two-way. That's one of the projects we've we've looked at considering, and it's on this list as well, so.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I think I remember Greg Sinclair saying that to me about five years ago. We need to make that two way. Thank you. That's good.
Other questions from the council at this time? Councilmember Pappin?
I don't really have questions. I think you're just Kohar, you're kind of looking for some gut direction here. Sandy doesn't like moderate income units. So or they don't really seem to fill a need. This is a very large project for that area. So I am not surprised that the need to to do some mitigation traffic wise and throw some more dollars at it has come before us. And as much as I hate to see moderate units go away, even if Sandy doesn't like them, I am I'm concerned about the neighborhoods. So if it were, if you're asking Diane Pappin, my feeling is I'd like to explore it some more, and I'd like to indicate to the applicant that this is one council member that would like to explore it further in the development agreement.
I think this is the beginning of the.
Explore it further in the development agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
I'm going to take us to public comment. I I've got some hands up. I want to make sure we get from. It's okay. It's okay.
Jumping out.
Why don't we go to Richard first? Richard Neve?
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. My name's Rich Neve, fifteen year resident of San Mateo and a thirteen year resident of Fiesta Gardens, and I'm the Civics Director for Fiesta Gardens Homes Association. As before, I I begin with my prepared statement, I just want to reach out and say thanks very much to Brad and Bethany. They have kept us extremely well informed on the TAP, and it's been a real pleasure working with them and also with the the members of his staff as well. So tonight, you reviewed a proposition from staff to allow California Coastal Properties to convert moderate income housing units to market rate units in order to contribute funds towards traffic mitigation measures along the Nineteenth Avenue Fashion Island Boulevard corridor. As you ponder this, I want you, I want to encourage you all to review what Brian Myers presented to the Planning Commission back in 2018. His claim was a thirty percent reduction in traffic as the land use at Concorde site changed from retail to mixed use. At best, this was disingenuous statement, one of which none of the local residents believed at the time. We now see the truth. The passages will be responsible for twenty three percent of the expected increased traffic along that corridor. Obviously, it would be naive to think the development of a mixed use facility with nine hundred and sixty one residential units would not increase, would not increase traffic. But I want to remind you all again of the Transit Oriented Development Mission Statement. The intent of the San Mateo Rail Corridor Transit Oriented Development Plan is to allow, encourage, and provide guidance for the creation of world class transit oriented development, the TODs, within half a mile radius of Hillsdale and Haywood Park Caltrain Station areas, while maintaining and improving the quality of life of those who already live and work in the area. That's a very important statement. It's hard to see how putting this money towards paying for the Nineteenth Avenue project mitigates expected traffic impact from the passages development. We've no way to realistically estimate the traffic impact from passages, and the problem is further compounded by the Station Park Green buildings, which are still yet to be finished. The Nineteenth Avenue Corridor Transit Traffic Action Plan has been in the works for several years now and is to address existing traffic issues. Paying to fix existing problems will not mitigate future impact from passages. From a community perspective, we would like to review the exact details of the traffic issues that have come to light, so we can actually help create a solution. I think we all understand that as long as California Coastal Properties tickle the state planning mandates, there is nothing we can do about this project and nothing that we can do to make local homeowners feel more comfortable with passages. However, we should all be planning very carefully for traffic and infrastructure impact that would inevitably happen from this large development. That means involving the Sunnybury and the Fiesta Gardens neighborhood and putting forward real plans with real solutions and holding developers accountable for the impacts of their projects. Let's take this opportunity to work together. We do support option three, but we do need to identify the best way of spending this money to live up to the TOD promise of maintaining and improving the quality of life for those who already live and work in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. And I should have mentioned this, but I'm giving each speaker three minutes. Adam Nugent?
Good evening, Mayor Galthos and City Council members. I wanted to speak on this subject. As you all, as you all know, I am a pro pedestrian transit and alternative transportation advocate, in addition to being an affordable housing advocate. I do want to encourage the city, constantly encourage, that the decisions that we make in this regard be context sensitive. In the grand scheme of things, I don't need to reiterate what Sandy said about moderate rate units. It's not like we're using the units themselves if they become just standard market rate. The community benefits, I think, for this project that would be most impactful would be the traffic improvements. The neighborhoods around this project are postwar neighborhoods where they were based on a hierarchical road design that causes traffic backup to be amplified when there are limited routes in and out of neighborhoods. This is different than our downtown and older neighborhoods, which are grid based and really able to evolve and change and support more alternatives for residents. So focusing on traffic improvements, I think, makes a lot of sense for this project. Again, I am a big fan of transit, pedestrian, and alternative transportation. However, funding traffic improvements, I think, would be the most beneficial in this area. So please consider this option.
Thank you, Adam. Barbara Ness, welcome, Barbara.
Hi, thank you for allowing us to speak to you on this topic, City Council and Mayor. And thank you, Kohar and team, for bringing this to our attention and letting us know that there are options out there you're considering. I really appreciate this. I won't take too much time because Rich Neve basically spoke my truth. I live in Sunnybury, five blocks from where this is going to happen. We get that this is likely going to happen, but traffic needs to be mitigated. But I do have a couple of questions, and I don't know if staff can speak to them today, or if it's something that you can take offline with me. I don't know all the ins and outs of the city rules with regard to developing our city traffic mitigation versus community benefits. So I'll just, I just have a few things. Is a community benefit supposed to be different than or in addition to general plan zoning, environmental impact? I feel like community benefit, I think traffic improvements should be what they are, and community benefit is over and above that. So I'm a little confused about the mix between community benefit and traffic improvement. And if I'm right about my really basic understanding of that, shouldn't the traffic improvement be required to mitigate and not be part of that public benefit that we're talking about? I could be wrong. I'm just asking the question. At the outset of this project, as Rich said, the traffic, we were told traffic was going to be go down because of the use of this project, and that's clearly not the case based on the study. City Council said that it was a priority to improve and to respond to the concerns of the residents of this neighborhood. I think that mitigating traffic is key, but I also want to understand better the community benefit aspect versus what should have already, what's already in process with Public Works, which is the traffic mitigation. I won't speak to option one, two, or three on this. Obviously, option three appears best to me, but I feel like more needs to happen than that because I'm concerned about this project and how our neighborhoods are going to be effective affected by it. There are four neighborhoods surrounding this project, and I just, I worry that not enough is being paid attention, attention to. And I'd like City Council to live by their word and their commitment to make sure that they don't only mitigate, but actually improve our neighborhoods as part of this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Barbara. Robert Newsom?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you, city staff, for bringing this to our attention. Thank you, City Council and Honorable Mayor, for giving us all time to voice our opinions on on this matter. Mostly, what I want to say has already been covered, but I do want to just reiterate a few things. One, I've been a Sunnybury resident for over twenty five years. Even in this time of pandemic, this is my commute. I I drive through this corridor twice a day. And even as, you know, I work in essential operations, so I've been able to continue, or I've been continuing to work even through the pandemic. And even as that's been happening, the traffic with just the development going on at Station Park Green is already impacted. And that's with probably less than a third of the normal people driving to work every day through that, through this corridor. So additionally, there's been a hit and run death while while under shelter in place on South Delaware Street. So we're definitely seeing continued impact of traffic. And like I said, this is before we've got everyone moved into Station Park Green, and this is before, you know, we've even broke ground on on these other new projects. So I hope that the City Council will consider basically moving from some of the moderate housing units instead redirect this money towards continued traffic improvements. I think, you know, when you look at your three options that are outlined, I'm in agreement that I would like to see, obviously, the more money put towards it as money is is not necessarily going to be as beneficial on moderate housing. And short of that, if they cannot or not willing to do that, I would suggest that we try to lean on them for more low, low income housing in in lieu of that. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Robert. Lisa Nash?
Okay. Good evening again, Council and Mayor. Thank you very much. I'm speaking to support the staff's recommendation, option number three, that combines the five point one six million dollar community benefit identified for moderate units with the passage developers' public benefit contribution of two point seven million to create a seven point eight six million dollar fund for traffic improvements. I'm doing this because, number one, city staff has and Sandy have said that rents for moderate income units really don't attract the people that we're trying to attract. We all definitely recognize we need more affordable housing in this city that's really affordable. It sounds like the public doesn't necessarily perceive the moderate income units as a good match for their needs. Number two, I think, as Adam Nugent mentioned, transit oriented development is so important, but it's only successful long term if the transportation infrastructure is dealt with at the same time as the housing development. And I believe this effort would go a long way in that regard. And this area in general is, as everyone said, hosting so much more development now and in the future, and the transportation infrastructure will only be more taxed. So if we address some of the transportation improvement needs now, it will certainly help the neighborhoods. There needs to be more discussion, but it will help the neighborhoods. It will help passage, and it will help future developments. And there will also be an opportunity for lots of high paying, good jobs to go along with the transportation improvements. And my basic math says that with the seven point eight six million dollars in payment to the city, everything on the recommended list from Public Works of improvements, except for the reversible lane on the bridge, could be made for six point three four million dollars. That would leave one point five two million dollars as a cushion, or to do something else that is transportation and transit oriented. And I would suggest that in, you know, negotiating with the with Mr. Meyer and his colleagues and the neighborhoods and the city, that there should be appropriate wording in the eventual agreement to ensure that if this change is made, the promised transportation improvements are made within a specified time period, so that the funds opened up don't get eaten up by future cost increases because the improvements have not been made in a timely manner. So thank you very much for trying to do the right thing, and thank you for your time tonight.
And unless there's any other public comment, we will go, let's see. Oh, we do have more public comment. Let's go to Dan's iPad. Dan? Robin? How about Robin?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you, Councilmembers. My name is Robin Gage. I'm a resident of Sunnybury. And most of my concerns were already raised by the other speakers, so I just wanted to voice my support for for option three and to explore kind of the traffic mitigation. You know, F minus minus traffic is not appealing in anybody's neighborhood. So would appreciate your focus on that. And thank you, Public Works, for everything you're doing to highlight this issue. Thank you.
Robin, thank you and welcome, and welcome to all of our speakers tonight. I appreciate hearing some voices we don't hear from very often. Adam Lorraine, close us out.
Speaking of voices you don't hear from very often, right? Good evening, again, Council and staff. This is a very interesting discussion. I'm privileged to be witnessing it before you. I wanted to also voice support for staff's recommendation. I'll defer on which option may be best. Leave that to the council, but I I do appreciate staff's work on continuing to think about how to maximize the community benefit from these projects and not to be tied in to decisions outside of the context that Mr. Nugent mentioned is so critical to ascertaining the best benefit for each particular situation. I, it is a little awkward to be looking at the, you know, traffic improvements related to LOS on a street where a lot of cars are going to be going through when we're talking about the benefits from a transit oriented development. But I do think that I will say I support this partly because I know that this development from the last Planning Commission meeting noted a number of significant bike and pet improvements around this project as well, which are very important. If those weren't a part of this discussion, I would be very concerned. But I I had heard about a number of Class Four protected bike lanes on Delaware and further work that's going to be in that area by Nineteenth as a result of this project, and those are very important. So knowing that that's part of this overall picture, I'm I'm a lot more in favor of this. I also just thought I'd throw out that I happen to be one of those people that's kind of on the bubble between low and moderate income when looking for places to rent in in our fair city. And there, as as Sandy noted, there there's a huge difference. In fact, it's about double. So I I happen to be someone who was, at one point, qualified to pursue low income rents in the city of San Mateo. And that, you know, a one bedroom at that rate was like fourteen hundred a month. Whereas, so when you compare that to the moderate income rate of two two thousand eight hundred to twenty eight fifty, it's it's a tremendous difference. And yet you might find people who are making that kind of missing middle income finding themselves, you know, interested in low and and maybe, as as was noted, finding other options in in the city instead of moderate. So I I don't know if that means we get rid of all moderate units in this, but I I do appreciate the overall work being done here and wanted to voice my support. Thank you.
Adam, thank you so much for that helpful insight. I want to try to go to Dan's iPad one more time. Dan? Maybe that's just what it's called. If you're on an iPad and you're and you have your hand raised, please speak to us now. You are muted. You're going to have to unmute first. Okay, those are all the speakers that I see. I see no more hands. No more hands at this time, so I will close the public comment, period, bring it back to the council. I'm feeling highly numerate tonight, highly numerate. That is how I am feeling. In the grand scheme of things, we're looking at a project and looking to put together a developer agreement that's going to net the city public benefit somewhere between ninety six and ninety nine million dollars and add tremendous housing that is that is very needed for many people. What is the pleasure of the council with regards to the recommendations and all of the thought that was put in by Kohar and the rest of the of the team here? Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, San Mateo is very committed to building housing, especially affordable housing. And in this area alone, around Delaware and Concorde, affordable housing, and in this area alone, around Delaware and Concorde, we have likely over 1,800 new housing units either built or in the pipeline. We have 599 from Station Park Green, we have 73 from AAA. We have, if this passage ultimately gets approved and built, it's 961, then we have Hayward Park Caltrain, and it goes on. That's 1,800 units. And in my opinion, we're keeping our commitment to building more housing. But we have also made other commitments to our current residents, and we say that neighborhoods' quality of life, and we say that traffic mitigation is also important. And traffic mitigation consistently remains a consistent A-level priority that we carry over year after year. I think we must also keep our commitment to neighborhood residents and do everything we possibly can to mitigate new traffic impacts that our own studies predict will materialize soon after these nearly 1,000 new families move into their new homes. We must strike that balance. As the staff report implies, moderate income restricted units are not really affordable housing, and have not been established in meeting unmet housing demand. These units will only be slightly more affordable than market rate, and they will still get built. As we head into November's election, this council is, in a very real sense, asking voters to trust us and not impose height and density restrictions on our general plan process or our future decisions. We tonight have an opportunity to show residents that we take traffic impacts from new development seriously, and that we will do everything possible to mitigate those impacts. I do fear that even the full $7.8 million might not be enough to mitigate all the impacts, but we need to do whatever we can and allocate every dollar, and every dollar that we advocate will help. And I sincerely believe that the better we can address traffic impacts from new development, the easier it will be for the community to support future housing development. We owe it to the neighborhoods to put the maximum amount of, towards circular, circulation improvements, and so I definitely support option number three.
Councilmember Lee.
Well said, Deputy Mayor. I concur, I support option number three. For me, I agree with your rationale, and particularly, I think that this is aligned with what the council's previous direction was, is to find ways to localize the community benefits to the impacted neighborhoods. And I think that there's ample evidence to support that the community is, is in very broad consensus and agreement that the circulation is lacking, and is really a high source of friction. And so I think that it makes, it makes perfect sense to, given that these options, to go with option three. I will say with, you know, with some caveat, that if there were, if a different kind of affordable housing product was on the table, I think my decision might be harder if we were considering doing more low-income affordable, or different kinds of housing products. For example, a townhome for sale, I think that, you know, I want to see, and I think we want to support a healthy and diverse housing stock to come online. And so if there were ways to do that with this project, you know, I think that that would be something worth exploring. But given the choices in front of us today, I trust the staff's analysis, and, you know, in my conversations with a lot of the housers, which totally validated that analysis, that really, the way to meet the missing middle needs is not through a moderate affordable housing in this format. So, given all of that, and also, as Adam Lorraine said, we know that there are bike and pedestrian improvements already baked in, and there's so much more open space, and this project will have, you know, really great benefits, and a number of amenities that will be a value add. So the commitment to improving traffic, I think, is where the investment belongs.
Excellent.
I got nothing to add, other than what I said before public comments. And everyone's done a great job articulating it as well, so I think I'll just sit here quietly.
Thank you, Councilmember Pappin. Well said. Councilmember?
Thank you for calling me, Mr. Mayor.
You have something to say? Councilmember Benin?
Thank you very much. So I have to admit that my mind is in a quandary right now, because I am always in favor of building affordable housing. And in fact, building housing, because that's the one thing we really don't have enough of around here. It's why prices are so high. People literally can't find enough housing to live in here. So with that said, I'm wondering, though, if, as it was stated, moderate housing is not how to reach the missing middle, I don't know how, right? But I know this, the idea of moderate housing is not going away. Because where I sit on the A-BAG Housing Methodology Committee, the RENA Housing Needs Determination, as has been done in the past, and eventually the allocation that we will be dealing with, has always included moderate income housing as a requirement. So, for instance, the period from 99 to 06, I'm reading this right off the chart, it called for 38% moderate. 07 through 14, 28% moderate. 15 through 23, the current cycle, 25% moderate. And now 23 through 31, projected, we don't know yet, we haven't had that discussion yet. But we do know that the total needed for the entire nine-county Bay Area is 441,000-plus units. So I think that we can't pretend that we don't have to find a way to fill that need somehow. But that said, I heard a lot from the public tonight about the need for traffic mitigations, which I have to say is the one constant that I have always heard from the public whenever they have commented on this project. And regarding the timeline, I note, I looked it up, the first set of plans were submitted on this project in 2017. So it's been a while to get here. Like I said earlier about other projects, it can be a long and arduous thing. So that's not the matter at hand, though, tonight. We have to figure out and make recommendations about how best for staff to proceed. Clearly, the number one priority for local residents is doing more to mitigate traffic, to be absolutely certain that we make that corridor able to handle not just traffic that we've been experiencing, but additional traffic. So, and I'm not so sure that we know really exactly how much additional traffic there's gonna be, because this project is making great efforts to reduce actual cars on the road. Okay? And that said, I still think, though, that there's a way to look at option three and go forward. I was, yeah, I think option three, but with the recognition that, as the applicant said, and I understand, with $95 million already in public benefits into this project, I think he mentioned that his budget is limited at this point. It's taking a long time, it's costing a lot to get there, and I think that with option three posted as it is, then so long as it doesn't really actually come out costing much more, that that should be about the limit of what we ask this applicant to do. So, those are my comments. Thanks.
Thanks, Rick. I'm gonna try to be brief here. I remember meeting Brian when I was the mayor in 2016. I first heard about this project. I had Charlotte in my arms. She was one. She was just a baby, but now she rides her bike right through that area. And I think my comments for you are the same. Number one, people are gonna wonder, are you taking away Trader Joe's? Because they're gonna want their Trader Joe's. You save Trader Joe's. Number two, they're gonna ask about traffic. They wanna know this area that has congestion, what are you gonna do to improve the area? And tonight, we're giving the ability to sort of take away some of these middle, moderate income units, and really put your money where your mouth is, and prove to the neighborhood, as the council is proving to the neighborhood as well, that we care about traffic flow in this area. But I also told you it was gonna cost you a lot of money. And what we see here is a commitment over $95 million, I think it'll be closer to $99 million at the end of the day. And I am thoroughly impressed that you have put the time in, and you've clearly talked to all the neighborhoods and all the residents, and that's why we're right on the cusp of seeing your project come to us in August. I agree with my fellow council members. I think it only makes sense to put the money into traffic improvements for this neighborhood. We owe it to them, we're committed to these traffic improvements, and it will make the overall project better. So I look forward to seeing you again in August. Kohar, we don't need to vote on this. I think you've heard from all the council members, I think there's consensus. Am I correct that I heard a majority of the council speaking to the third option? Yep. There you go.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much, Kohar. Brian, thank you, and I'll see you in August.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll see you in August with your checkbook.
Thank you, Councilmember Pappin, as usual.
All right, all right, all right. I want to thank everybody for the public comment tonight. We had a full agenda for a meeting that wasn't even a regular meeting. Thank you, Drew. And now it's time for reports and announcements. If anybody has anything that they've gotta get off their chest right now, feel free to bring it up. We did have a wonderful kids' march from City Hall that was a fantastic success, and I thank the organizers for that. We're all being very mindful of the numbers with regards to COVID. Council, Deputy Mayor Rodriguez, you have something you want to add?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. So I know I really don't like taking up time on this area, but from the advice of our city attorney, I just wanted to quickly reference a opinion piece, or a letter to the editor that was put in to question whether or not I could participate in the discussion regarding police budgets, because I was also a member of the PAL board. And I just wanted to, I mean, I don't really know what all this stuff means, but he, the city attorney has looked into it thoroughly, and has said that there's not an issue at all with me participating, and it looks like government code section 1090, and then there's 1091.5, and then there's a case that allowed it or something. So anyway, for the record, I just want to add that.
How dare you give your time and volunteer even more of your time to a community organization devoted to trying to help at-risk youth?
I was gonna tell, I told Sean that I don't think Rick could participate in any vote if.
Yeah, you're probably right. I have one thing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I just want to reiterate, because the Caltrain thing is coming back, about the track here in Hayward Park. And everybody should be aware that I will continue to be recused as a result of my location, of my property, within very close proximity to that area. I'm in the Hayward Park neighborhood, the track's right at the end of the block. So any member of the public listening, I continue to be recused. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. And Councilmember Lee.
Hi, everybody. I wanted to raise to our attention and also discussion the opportunity to adopt a resolution recognizing that Black Lives Matter. We received a resolution template, and then also the county did one recently. And I think that the community wants and deserves to hear us say the words and honor the fact that Black Lives Matter. And so I wanted to hear feedback from the rest of the council about this opportunity to take this up.
I think if you're asking the rest of the council to vote in support of that, I just would distribute it to the other council members, so that everybody has a chance to see the language. But if you just want all of us tonight to say Black Lives Matter, I think each of us feels that very strongly.
I, well, the intent was for a resolution.
Okay.
But feel free to say that Black Lives Matter.
Yeah, Black Lives Matter, happy to bring it up next time to vote on it, correct? Is that what we're gonna do?
Yep, there's a, there's a, yes, pass the language around so everybody has an opportunity to see what you want, okay?
Sure.
Thank you so much. Anything else? That's it. Thank you all so much. Good night, everybody. Our next meeting is July 20th. Our next meeting is July 20th.